Okay, I'm going to call to order our special successor agency city council of council authority meeting for January twenty-third. No problem.
Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair Chris Warren.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Chauvin.
Here.
Okay, I'm sure going to be recessing in closed session. Would you give us a second?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we have two items on closed session for tonight. The first is conference with legal counsel existing litigation in the case of Tenev Civic Residents Association versus Stanton. And we have conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government of section five or nine by six point eight. With all of the properties listed on the agenda, negotiating parties, city manager, and the other parties are also listed on the agenda.
As everyone from the public that would like to address this, or any item in closed session.
Mr. Mayor, we have none in the public and did not receive any correspondence via mail as well.
Thank you. I'll adjourn then to closed session.
Closed session at five thirty-one P. M.
Really wanted to do was give the city a chance to see who the sergeants are, who the deputies are, and the county homage to all the hard work that they do, especially those who know were, who have left, gone to some different assignments. So unfortunately tonight, we're very busy in the city. So some of our sergeants are not here because they're actually currently working. They can get them, they will, but we'll go on. Sergeant Phil Avalos, he worked today. He did six and a half years here in Stanton. He's now gone down south and he's working in the state of the Good Hills. He was unique because he was a deputy here and he was a sergeant here. So I know most of you know him. He did really, really good. I'm really, really proud of him. Second Sergeant Carlos Jerome, he was my admin sergeant. I've known him for twenty years and he has now got a new job. He is doing all the training at the Basic Academy to learn how to fight, remember head comes on and so forth. So he's the sergeant of that. That is a very pristine position and I'm so very proud of him. And he's working currently teaching a class, so that's why he's not here tonight. Sergeant Lee Martinez. And then Sergeant Kevin DeFreeze, he is not here tonight. But I've known Sergeant DeFreeze since I was eight. And our families are friends and he brings a wealth of experience from narcotics, to gangs, to patrol, to investigations. He truly is, I mean, he's one of the best. Probably one of the most calmest men I've ever met in my life. He's got three daughters at home, so that's what he says, that's how he keeps so calm. So again, I'm excited to work with him. I think it's gonna be kind of fun. Sergeant Lee Martinez, he comes from the Good Hills. I've known him just as long. And again, he was an investigator, brings a ton of experience. And really what we're seeing is those that come to Stanton, they go, it's not just to be brand new. It's somebody that's gotta have experience because of the different calls for service that we have here. So he's highly experienced. He's working on the day side of the week and he's working at midnight. He actually likes the nights, as possible, but does, so that's where he's working. All right, so Sergeant Bogdanovich, she's running admin sergeant. She has an extensive background in investigations. She was a tactical officer at the Basic Academy. She actually worked for me. She can yell. She is loud. She holds people accountable. She's already made, you know, some improvements. I'm excited to work with you, but I wanted, you know, the city council to know who, who actually runs the station. It's not me. Unless it's actually her, so thank you. Okay, next, Deputy Matthew Correo. Prior to coming to Sheriff's Farm, and he actually worked in Los Angeles. He was actually a police officer. Wealth of knowledge, brings a ton of experience. He's got a ton of experience, you know, the homeless. A ton of experience that we're looking forward to kind of tapping that resource and he can help us. So again, he's been on train for quite a while, but just the first time we able to, with all the holidays, I can bring him here, but he's one of the newest deputies to work for the city. So before we get to the deputy here, I want to thank Investigator Lewis's family. They're actually here tonight. His kids are here. It was really important for them to see the station, for them to come over, for them to take some time out of their day to do that. You know, I think with regards to this job, you rely heavily, you know, on your family, your friends. You're doing the difficult, you know, difficult things that we see here. So thank you guys for coming tonight. I really appreciate that. Sure, you guys recognize him? So I'm gonna read something. I usually like, you know, kind of going on the cusp, but I'm gonna read this. So he did six and a half years in Stanton. Yeah, that's a long time. Stanton Police Services for twenty-twenty-three. I think it's now investigator Lewis. He's deputy here. He's been assigned to the set team. He's been assigned to the debt team. He was a field trained officer. He's trained hundreds of deputies here. He's had hundreds, you know, different calls for service. Extremely busy, extremely, you know, he speaks well. He works well with the public and it's something that has been, you know, I think inspiring to the next generation who wants to kind of share some work. He's constantly going out of wait, you know, to make a difference. And he does it in a very professional manner. And he doesn't just stop with his calls for service. Just for example, he was driving back into the city, he saw a fire. He stopped, he put it out. He was able to, you know, to detain the suspect who had started three other fires. He is the reason why that we have that person in custody today. It's all because of him. So that was something that I think was truly special. He was able to work with fire and was able to give them all the different updates. And he was able to shut down parts of each ballpark. And his radio transmission got all the resources there really fast. So Lewis, thank you so very much for that. He's a professional. He's humble. He's articulate. His work ethic is to the top. He works harder than I do and like I said, he's an investigator for a reason. He's done really good things here for the city of Stanton and the next generation. You know, I think what's important is our deputies have learned from him. So thank you, actually thank you, Investigator Lewis. You know, your contribution to the city of Stanton. We are safe because of you.
Investigator Lewis, if you could come up please, we would like to meet you. If you're a deputy, don't go away because we're having a picture.
You can come closer if you'd like. Oh, you too.
Okay, this is for Investigator Brad Lewis, Orange County Sheriff's Deputy Deputy of the Year for the city of Stanton. The City Council of the City of Stanton, as a resident, do hereby wish to come in and salute the dead case courage bravery of Stanton's Orange County Sheriff's Department. Investigator Brad Lewis was chosen by the Orange County Sheriff's Department as the Stanton Police Service's Deputy of the Year for two oh two three. In spitting that we join in the celebration of accomplishment and recognition of Investigator Brad Lewis for his selfless devotion, commitment to protecting and serving the citizens of Stanton and Orange County. The City Council extends to you our sheerst appreciation for your invaluable contributions to us and our residents. I wish you upon your appreciation and best wishes for your continued success. Congratulations.
Three, one. One, two, three. Who would you like to be your first, sir?
Bring up the band. Mr. Mayor, I. Come on. So by the way, this is a gentleman that got some million dollars reviewing our sheriff's department's substation. Investigator Lewis, congratulations, great job. I just wanted to echo in our support as well for our citizens. Let's get the kids. And the wife.
Miss in one.
Okay, number three. Okay, all the deputies up there, let's go. You guys, if you want, move the chairs out of the way. Move the chairs.
Get everyone in here. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to item A. This is the American flag presentation by Congressman Lou Korea. Our representative from Congress. I see a voice.
Great feedback, City of Stanton. An honor to be here. All-American city. And to believe Stanton deserves a flag that is flown over the United States Capitol. On behalf of the citizens behind me watching this, like to present you and the council fly of the United States of America. If you fly it proudly above the city of Stanton, sir.
All right, everybody back down.
Ready? One, two, three. Ready?
Thank you. Luke, before you, Luke, Congressman. Before you go, I just want to be honest to know this gentleman was able to give one million dollars to repair our police station. And because they serve our community as well as the neighboring cities with the North Division, on behalf of my community and the Sheriff's Department, I want to thank you for that, Luke. As discretionary money, when you chose us, and we're very grateful. Thank you.
Orange County is a donor county to the state of California. State of California is a donor state to the federal government. And so my job, to a great extent, is bringing back the taxpayer dollars that this community actually sends to Washington, D. C. It's my job essentially respond to your needs, the needs of the constituents. Primarily one being bring back our taxpayer dollars. I'm gonna keep fighting for you and for the citizens of this great city of Stanton. I enjoyed serving you in the State Senate as your state senator a few years back, and now it's my honor to represent you in the halls of Congress. So thank you for the honor, sir, and I'll continue to work with you as long as the will of the people should have been be here. Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving along. We're now at item number C. This is gonna be a presentation about the Cypress College Foundation regarding the forty-ninth annual Americana Awards, which will honor Mr. Rigo Roberto Ramirez as our Chief House and Crime Forces of the Year for the city of Stanton. Our council and staff, I hope you all received the email from me. Personal invitation, it kind of tells you, you know, what's going on, what we do. Last year, I was chairman of this wonderful event and we raised over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we're able to provide scholarships, funding, and help funds to the students at Cypress College, of which I believe there were close to thirteen hundred staff members. Anyway, thank you. Mr. Tom Kimmernan is the writer of our audition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for having us here. I think you've said it all. And I appreciate it. This year, the Americana Awards are gonna be at a new location. We're gonna be at the Westin Anaheim Resort. And we look forward to having you join us. I want to thank the city of Stanton and the city council for continuing to support us over the years. And I also want to thank the city committee for helping us to select an incredible honoree this year for the city of Stanton, who we will talk about and introduce in just a moment. As you can see, we've recognized forty-seven citizens of the year for the city of Stanton in the past. We just brought in new, six hundred and thirty-six new students into the city, into Cypress College from the city of Stanton that are attending this current upcoming semester. We give away more than four hundred thousand dollars in scholarships each year. And I'll add that we have given nearly a hundred thousand dollars in emergency assistance. Those funds come from our events like Americana and the other things that we do to support all of our important work. Last year, we recognized Brian Donahue as your Citizen of the Year at the Americana Awards. And this year, we are very excited to recognize Rigo Ramirez. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Rigo, much of which you probably already know because he spent so much time here in this council chamber. Rigo has served ten years in public office and held positions as mayor, mayor pro tem, council member, and one year as planning commissioner. He has also served as judge for the Lions Club International Student Speaker Contest Regional Finals. He's participated, along with his son Nicholas, in the Santa Siren Annual Toy Giveaway in five different Stanton neighborhoods. He's donated to the City of Stanton Halloween Festival to purchase pumpkins. And he let us know that he, this reminds Rigo that he and his father used to plant pumpkins and then donate pumpkins to this event. And supporting the fundraising efforts of the Boys and Girls Club of Stanton and the food drives of the Wayne Park-based Giving Children Home Organization. He's done so much. And to learn more about what he has done, you are gonna have to come to the Americana Awards on March sixteenth. Here's the short promotional video.
Hello, my name is Rigo Ramirez. I'm the Citizen of the Year for the city of Stanton. Please join me on March sixteenth for the Americana Awards at the Westin Anaheim Resort.
So we hope that you come out and join us to support us once again. I know it's on your agenda item tonight to maybe sponsor a table, provide auction items. Of course, the city will have two pages in our Americana program that you can promote the city, promote Rigo, and the other things that we do. We also have an incredible opportunity drawing. And we have each year with over ten thousand dollars in prizes that people can win each year. I also, he wasn't able to join us tonight, but you will get to meet him in the future. We have a new president at Cypress College. His name is Dr. Scott Baer. He's been with us for exactly three weeks. And he will look forward to meeting you at the Americana Awards and maybe at a future city council meeting. I'd like to invite Rigo to come up and maybe say a couple of words and then we can provide a little recognition. Rigo Ramirez.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll be brief. We need to pride forward vision. That's what drives us. I started here ten years ago. You always look at investing into something. When you look at investing something, you look at the value of it. At the time, Stanton didn't have a whole capital of money in the coffers. But we did have people, very strong people, very traditional people. People that knew that it was all about lending a hand and not a handout. That's what drives me. That's what drives my family. That's what keeps my family here in Stanton. So keep up the great work, everyone. Appreciate the motivation. Appreciate the inspiration. And can't wait for the next ten years. Thank you. And can't wait for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Sure, lady. Thank you so much for having us here. Can we do some recognition for Rigo? I know it seemed like it was a...
Yeah, Congressman has this for...
Congratulations, Rigo. I just want to make sure that before I give you this award, recognition congressional record read to the halls of Congress will be there until America sees its kingdom come to them. Your story will be, I just want to make sure that this is not like an announcement you're moving out of the city. So we can... We're going to be another 10, 15, 20 years out. Another one, Mr. Mayor. You're the... No, you don't.
Sorry, it's hard to take a picture.
Right, there you go.
Okay, now, hold on, hold on.
You can be there. You can just stand up.
We now have six posters. It'll be tough. So it's three, three times. Okay, Howard, Howard. Ready, everybody else? We've got him.
Thank you, sir.
Last three, last two, guys. Come on. Who's got your pants? Howard, come on. We got your pants.
They also have Rachel Gattacar and Tanner Lindon. You're going to come and speak. No kidding. Thank you so much. Thank you.
What Howard forgot to mention is the fact that, I guess you've all heard this term, winner, winner, chicken, hen. Yeah, well, if most of these things, you get chicken or something else. Well, I chose a name for this one that they don't know about it yet. It's called serpent turd. And you're going to ask yourself, what serpent turd? Well, the reason is because we're also serving lobster tails that night. So if you don't come here, this is a great meal. Thank you, Howard. All right, number nine. This is our consent calendar. Has there been anybody from the public to speak on any item on the consent calendar right now?
Mr. Mayor, we have no member of the public that wishes to become a consent commander. However, before we do before with approval, I would like to make note that it will be made into administrative changes to the minutes of January 19.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, we're going to go ahead and so motion to take care of the right of amendment X on that. All in favor? All right, that is our consent calendar. Okay, we are going to move up our public hearings. I'm going to ask the council if we can now address 10B. I'll move that we got 10B. All in favor? All right, 10B. This is an interim urgency ordinance in the City Council of Stanton to establish a temporary moratorium on establishing any new tobacco retailer business as defined in the temporary moratorium on any expansion, enlargement, and/or alteration of existing tobacco retailers. This pending study and preparation of an updated decision list for code and zoning code for certain code sections, 65858 and 36937, and determining the ordinance, the ordinance to be exempted. Is this a first reading?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This would be the introduction of this ordinance. Before we proceed, however, we've got two council members who reside within the house and have a couple of subjects, tobacco retailer businesses. And so those are Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Morris. Therefore, we are suggesting that the council members refuse themselves, however, to enact emergency ordinance. We would need a vote by the City Council as we really need one council member to say that to have the right number of people. To make it a bit fair, we have a card with names and with the paper names on it. I'm going to pull one out for...
So why don't you get your new card?
I have Councilmember Donald Torrey. So...
So you guys with the...
This is your representative, Ron.
Thank you. Item 10B is proposed urgency ordinance that would be interim, more than brand on the establishment of tobacco retailers as defined, as well as expansion and large and or alteration of existing tobacco retailers. This would be pursuant to government code 65858 and 697. What this code enforcement has discovered in recent inspections of locals, bookshops, tobacco retailers is in five of the 11 inspections, they were selling flavored tobacco in violation of these municipal codes and also state laws in the 700. Flavored tobacco, according to city data, there's a really persistent challenge that flavored tobacco has been shown to be a big way towards more regular tobacco use. And, for example, these cigarettes continue to be the most prevalent tobacco product amongst high school students and students. So that would be immediate public health city danger that retailers within the city are selling flavored tobacco in violation of the law. And the city staff was directed a couple of weeks ago by the City Council to look at the city's comprehensive regulations on tobacco retail to see how these can strengthen, how to ensure proper inspections, how are these working within the city and where to cover these inspections. And so while the city is already undertaking those actions, the city staff is presenting this council a temporary moratorium on the establishment of new tobacco retailers for the enlargement and alteration of existing ones. A subject retail tobacco dealer would be a retailer that has at least 50% of its products in the sale of tobacco products. And so with that, this would be a 45-day moratorium on to give the staff time to study and help them gain some of those protections. Is that any more questions?
This is going to protect the public from the kinds of flavored tobacco?
Absolutely. That is one of the findings in immediate health safety welfare issue that is why you're suggesting...
And a question. If somebody wanted to come in, let's say, a cigar lounge, is that prohibiting that person from doing that? Under this, or they said it's designed to do what you say?
Mayor and Council, if someone wanted to come in with proposed use such as a cigar lounge, we would look at that and put it against the definition of the subject retailer, tobacco retailer to see what amount of product they're going to sell or provide. That said, even if they were subject to that during the penance, they'd be in more moratoriums. Still have to take an application to process them. However, if they are subject to more moratoriums, then the city would not be able to give out tokens or other licenses. So it would really be dependent on the application that was provided in that application.
So basically, if they, if someone came in and was able to follow the city ordinance as is written with this new amendment and not be affected by the temporary, then they would be able to move forward with this application till this time is made or this is required?
That's correct. The city would continue during this time to take an application to process them subject to more moratoriums at that point. During the penance, more moratoriums.
Okay, good. I'm going to open the public hearing. Opportunities. Maria Montez, please.
Buenas noches a todos. Buenas noches señoras alcalde, shower, y concejo municipal. Mi nombre es María Montez. Quiero expresarle mi agradecimiento por su tiempo y atención, especialmente en lo que respecta a la votación sobre el tema 10B. Es de agradecer que el ayuntamiento que esté atento a las inquietudes y deseos de los vecinos. Gracias por su dedicación a nuestra comunidad. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Thank you.
I will be ready for María. Hi, my name is María Montez, and I would like to express my gratitude for your time and attention, especially in regards to voting on item 10B. It is truly appreciated that the City Council is attentive to the concerns and desires of the residents for your dedication for it.
Thank you for that. Our next speaker is Maria Salgado.
Buenas noches, alcalde, shower, y concejo municipal. Mi nombre es María Salgado. Quiero expresar mi gratitud por su dedicación y atención a los asuntos que conciernen a nuestra comunidad, particularmente en la votación sobre el tema 10B. Agradecemos sinceramente su compromiso de escuchar las voces de los residentes. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración.
So, you may, your shower and City Council. My name is María Salgado, and I want to express my gratitude for your dedication and attention to the matters concerning our community, particularly in voting on item 10B. Your commitment to listening to the voices of the residents is really appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Luis, please.
Good evening, Mayor, showers, and City Council members. My name is Jose Luis. I'm very grateful that you are taking the time tonight on item 10B. This will help you follow the due staff. Thank you very much.
Our next, oh, thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Hannah. Is that Hannah Hannah?
Hannah Hannah.
Okay, Hannah Hannah. Hannah squared.
My name is Hannah Hannah. Thank you for taking the time in voting on the item 10B. We appreciate that City Council is listening to what their residents want. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Thank you very much for being here and speaking on behalf of this item. We appreciate your input for our last three council meetings, and we're well informed at this point. If I can have our city attorney, please, we recommend you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Recommend making actions for the city to find over those urgency work in the section. And the job urgency ordinance, number 21, we think is helping current urgency ordinance council system. Establishing a temporary moratorium on establishing tobacco retailers at the time. The temporary moratorium on expansion, enlargement, and oral alteration of existing tobacco retailer businesses. And the study of the preparation of updates to season this for code.
Questions? Okay, I don't know. Work with you, please.
Give a motion.
Yes, I am. Go ahead, sir. Second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a person, sorry.
We have a motion by Councilmember Van. He's taken by Councilmember Taylor. I'm now proceeded to roll call vote. Councilmember Van? Yes. Councilmember Taylor?
Yep.
Mayor, put in the word.
Yeah.
And your shot.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item 10A. Again, thank you for those of you that came to speak tonight. I appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go on to item 10A. This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the Plaid Commission's Resolution number 2562, which approved the revocation of Plaid Commission's Resolution Number 859, size plan design B45 for the operation of a motel at 11632 Beach Boulevard in a general mixed-use overlay commercial general CG song due to significant negative impacts caused by the operation of the motel use. This matters to the top of our City Council as an appeal of the Plaid Commission's decision to revoke. Okay, at this time, we do have to reclusive some of our City Council members because of a conflict of interest. The two council members, Howard, at this time, before you leave the dais, would you please state your conflict of interest? I will start with Alex, please.
I own property.
Thank you. You're very pleased. Carol?
I own property adjacent to the motel.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, we still have a forum, so we're in good shape to go. All right, the hearing today will be conducted in accordance with Rule 2.8 of the City Council Rules of Order, which I believe will read in 2022. If I review it, copies of those will also given to each council member for their review. Have any council members met and or discussed the subject matter of this appeal hearing with any individual prior to the public hearing other than the council's legal counsel? At this time?
I didn't.
Okay? If so, each council member should disclose such a meeting and discussion and record the time. We are to do that. At this time, we will commence with the public hearing. At this time, we will commence with a public hearing and the presentation of evidence, testimony, and statements by city staff or council. Would the city clerk, police, or any witnesses who have testified on behalf of the city, that submit necessitates itself, please state your name before the record before being sworn in. Also, we have the, in our rules, we have the ability to also swear other people that are participating, who are attorney at this time, who is not witness, uh, make that decision. After we finish the, uh, reflection of the process a little bit, at the end of the staff presentations, does any member of the council have any questions you'd be able to ask them to the staff or council? So those will be clearly on our, okay? At this particular time, we're gonna begin, we're gonna be hearing from the appellate. The appellate is gonna have an opportunity at this time to present evidence, testimony, and other statements in support of this appeal or the appeal of whoever. If the appeal, appellate will present the evidence through a witness testimony. Each witness must state his or her name for the record if he's sworn in, and his third clerk will read before he or she provides testimony. And of course, at the conclusion, the appellate's presentation, does any member of the council have questions? You have the opportunity. People might read it, don't they?
We'll go ahead now, and you staff, you present the staff report?
Hold on for a second. Um, is there any questions on what I just read? I just wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to understand some of the framework. Okay, go ahead. Out.
This Crystal Lynn Eglazal will be presenting the staff report to the City.
Good evening. Council tonight is being asked to consider an appeal of the planning commission's December 2020, 2020 decision to revoke planning commission resolution 859, which approved precise plan design.
Excuse me, Chris. It sounds to stand here as very important, especially to the very busy City Council. Again, just to be honest, I would approve it, please.
Will do. Approved precise plan design P-435 in 1982, which allowed the development and operation of a motel use at 11632 Beach Boulevard. That will now provide the City Council with a presentation on 11632 Beach Boulevard to provide full background on the activities and impacts from operation of the current hotel under PC Resolution 859. The subject site is located within the general mixed-use overlay commercial general dome on the east side of Beach Boulevard, south of Orangewood Avenue, and north of Chapman Avenue. The subject site is surrounded by a car dealership to the north, a motel to the south, and residential uses to the east and west. The site was developed as a motel in 1983 after approval of the precise plan of design, which we now refer to as a site plan and design review of the current municipal code. The 1982 public hearing record for P-435 does not reflect any concerns from police or surrounding properties over public nuisance or criminal activity on the property. The motel was originally developed and operated at Howard Johnson until 2015. Like in, operated the motel from 2016 to 2017. California One Hospitality LLC acquired the property and began operation at Dixie, Orange County in 2018. City interactions over the past year have been with Dr. Dipo Patel representing this property. The motel use has operated at this location for over 40 years. However, the use has now increasingly created negative impacts to the community. In the past five years since the current property owner took ownership, the number of law enforcement calls relating to the property have increased at an alarming rate. Orange County Sheriff's Department records show that over the last five years, calls for service at Dixie have increased 256% from 47 calls in 2019 to 172 calls as of November of 2023. This is the highest ratio of calls per room for all motels in the city. The chart on the left shows a total number of law enforcement calls for service received by all Stanton Motels over the last five years. This shows a general trend of maintenance or decreasing calls per year, except for the Dixie. The chart on the right shows a comparison of the ratios, which takes into account the number of rooms at each motel. In both cases, the Dixie shows a clear and rapid increase over the last five years. When looking at these charts, it's important to note that the Villa Motel is adjacent to the Dixie but has reduced its number of calls for service in the same time period. Similarly, the Starlight Hotel, with 32 rooms located in just two properties south of the Dixie, has an even lower number of calls with a range of only nine to 16 calls over the last five years. The types of calls for service at Dixie go well beyond uncommon disturbances typically associated with hotels. The call types include assault with deadly weapon, carjacking, shots heard, robbery in progress, battery, prostitution, and investigate dead bodies. For the City Council's reference, the table describes arrests and citations made in relation to the Dixie. Notable is that there were 10 arrests and citations related to narcotics violations in 2023. Comparatively, in 2022, there were only three arrests or citations related to narcotics. In 2021, there were two arrests or citations, while in 2020 and 2019, there was only one arrest or citation in each year. This again shows the increase in narcotics violations on the property over the last five years.
Could you go back one bit? Go back one. Did you say, did you say homicide there? Good. Can I say that? That is.
Which call was that that you were looking at, sir? First call, second call, third call, fourth?
Okay, thank you.
For further reference, these are just some of the examples of what law enforcement found when responding to these calls. Suspicious person in vehicle. On August 29th, 2023, an individual was found bleeding from the ribs, unconscious, and not breathing at the Dixie. He was transported to UCI medical center, later reported that he was, that he was involved in an altercation at the motel and stabbed in the chest. Use of pipe bomb. On May 11th, 2023, an individual with a pipe bomb suspect was apprehended, prosecuted, and pled guilty in June 2023 to attempting to set fire and burn one of the buildings at the Dixie with a flammable and combustible incendiary device. Robbery report. April 8th, 2023, a woman walking to her room at the Dixie was approached by a man who threatened her with a three-inch knife. He demanded her wallet and then stabbed her and ran away with the wallet. Assault with a deadly weapon. On March 5th, 2021, there was a report regarding a motel guest who was walking his dog when another motel guest got out of his vehicle and struck the man five to six times with a bat, causing injury to the front and back of his head. The report provides that Dixie cameras do not record. Suspicious person circumstances. On November 18th, 2021, a woman reported from the motel that she was subject to some kind of sex trafficking. The caller said she did not feel safe, someone was making a mockery on her, and that someone was going to take her away. Suspicious person circumstances. On December 10th, 2022, a female called and reported that a male had touched her genitals at the motel. Disturbance. On April 25th, 2023, a woman called law enforcement claiming that there was a man in the motel who was threatening to shoot her with a gun after he gave her money for sex and she refused. Suspicious person circumstances. On July 7th, 2023, a woman reported that her pimp had forced her friend into his vehicle at the Dixie and driven off. Again, 172 calls, 172 calls as of November 2023. The generic-looking call types listed have a greater significance than just a call and a responding officer. Calls for service at the Dixie have resulted in an increase of almost 200% in consumed police time. 54% of the city's annual budget, $16.2 million a year, goes toward law enforcement and code enforcement. The illegal and illicit activities that occur on the subject site have drawn the attention of local advocacy groups. On October 14th, 2023, a group from northeast of the wall, which focuses on prostitution and human sex trafficking, conducted a protest on the subject site.
Could you go back one, could you? Go back. Okay, and with a very, I think that's where I was referring to investigation of the dead body, so I found that happened. I mentioned that was right.
Impacts to city resources go beyond law enforcement impacts. The calls for service from the Orange County Fire Authority have also significantly increased by 533% over the last five years. In 2023, the Dixie reached the exact same number of calls for OCSD service at the motel sick, which had six times the number of rooms at Dixie. The chart on the left shows a total number of OCSD calls for service received by all Stanton Motels over the last five years. This again shows a general trend of small spikes and decreases for all motels except for Dixie. The chart on the right shows a comparison of the ratios, which takes into account the number of rooms at each motel. In both cases, the number of rooms, I'm sorry, in both cases, the Dixie shows a clear and rapid increase over the last five years. Again, as a matter of comparison, the Villa Motel is adjacent to the Dixie but has a range of eight to 17 calls for service in the same time period. And similarly, the Starlight Hotel, with 32 rooms located in two properties south of the Dixie, has an even lower number of calls with a range of more than nine calls over the last five years.
Listen to, can you go back? I'm sorry, go back one more. Can you read the bottom one? Is that it? I think you missed that. Are there orders?
On February 9th, 2021, Orange County Fire Authority arrived at the motel parking lot to investigate a report of an unconscious male. Individual was pronounced dead. For the council's reference, this table shows the severity of the types of calls for OCSD service over the last year. The top two types of calls, trauma, assault, bleeding, and overdose drugs, are consistent with OCSD records, which showed narcotics violations and assault at the Dixie. The City worked with the property owner for nearly a year to alleviate the grave nuisances at the property. Despite those efforts, illegal activity at the property only worsened and increased. Initial communication indicated a partnership, where the property owner acknowledged new procedures such as the vehicle registration system were required to better manage the motel. Unfortunately, as the months progressed, nuisance activities continued, and on June 27th, 2023, the property owner sent an email to the city manager expressing that she and management were unable to alleviate the motel's nuisance conditions, making a comparison to a retail store open to the public. However, a motel is not like a retail store, because motel premises are only produced by patrons who have properly registered and paid for use of a guest room and related amenities. For this reason, onsite security, vehicle registration program, and regular monitoring are crucial to operating a motel. The lack of such programs and monitoring have resulted in the OCSD serving as the de facto security for the Dixie. This is a major drain on the city's resources, and the city cannot afford to continue subsidizing one property owner's responsibility to secure their property. On September 7th, 2023, the city manager visited the site to verify vehicle registration was being implemented. Unfortunately, she found that only five of 26 vehicles in the parking lot were registered with the motel. Additionally, the trash bin was overflowing. A couple appears to be sleeping in their car before the woman exited the car to urinate in the parking lot, then returned to the car so that they could drive off. And a man was found laying at the top of the stairs appearing intoxicated with dry blood on his feet. The city manager informed the property owner of the conditions found on the property. In response, the property owner met with an Orange County Sheriff's Deputy Sheriff's Department representative to discuss potential security improvements or deterrence. Unfortunately, the property owner implemented one suggestion without obtaining building permit and was notified by code enforcement to remove until permits were properly obtained. The property owner did not obtain permits and instead appealed the code enforcement action, which was upheld by the year round. Additionally, on September 13th, 2023, the property owner sent an additional email to the city manager stating that she witnessed drugs, homeless activity, prostitution, and then further indicated the property does look like a nuisance. The municipal code has established procedures for replication of previously approved permits or approvals in Stanton Municipal Code Section 20.630. The procedures indicated that the original review authority must be able to make any one of seven potential findings to revoke the permit. The current conditions, along with a five-year history upon the subject site, was able to support these four findings for replication. For the council's reference, we'll go through each finding. Finding one, changed circumstances and public health and safety and welfare replication. The original approval of PPD-435 was granted in 1982, at which time there were no concerns regarding crime and nuisances. At this time, however, operations under current ownership have been rife with crime and public nuisance. Numerous and increasing number of calls for service show a considerable increase in criminal activity on the motel property, which the current owner and management have been unable or unwilling to continue to corrupt. The precise plan of design approved the development and operations of motel use, which have progressively morphed into a public nuisance. And the subject site has become an attractive venue for nuisance activity, which is a significant drain on city and law enforcement conditions that are a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. Finding two, one or more original conditions has not been substantially fulfilled or have been violated. The precise plan of design, which originally approved the development and operation of the motel use, established conditions of approval that the subject site has failed to comply with. Specifically, condition 2A requires that all applicable requirements of the Stanton Municipal Code be met. Additionally, condition 2 provides that failure to abide and comply with the conditions and the Stanton Municipal Code constitutes grounds for replication. The staff report and its attachments show that the property has failed to maintain registration, sanitary, and security provisions of the Stanton Municipal Code. Additionally, the property is deemed to be a public nuisance as identified in Stanton Municipal Code Section 9.16.020, and the subject site has been maintained in a manner that continues to attract unlawful activity and continues to operate as a public nuisance. Anything which is in interest to health or is indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property by an entire community or neighborhood. A letter was received at the planning commission hearing stating from a residential neighborhood that the impacts from the public nuisance conditions at the property were detrimental to their neighborhood. Again, Stanton Municipal Code Section 9.16.020W provides that violations of state law nuisance provisions are also deemed to be a local nuisance. provides that violations of state law nuisance provisions are also deemed to be a local nuisance. Civil Code Section three four seven nine provides that a nuisance is anything which is interest to health, including but not limited to the illegal sale of controlled substances or is indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. As discussed in the next slide, there is evidence regarding the illegal sale of controlled substances and other indecent activity affecting property, its neighbors, and the greater public. Stanton Municipal Code Section nine point one six point zero two zero A A declares a public nuisance when a property is maintained in a manner where people engage in two or more acts which are prohibited pursuant to the law of the state, including possession of controlled substances, prostitution, gambling, or solicitation for unlawful conduct. There is evidence based on reports made to the Orange County Sheriff's Department that illicit sexual activity, including chemotherapy and prostitution, occur at the site. In twenty twenty-three to date, there have been, I'm sorry, as of the end of twenty twenty-three, there have been ten arrests or citations at the property related to narcotics violations. In the prior four years, there was a total of seven narcotics violations, demonstrating a steep rise in illegal narcotics use and possession at the site. Narcotics found at the property include black tar heroin, cocaine, methamphetamine, and amphetamine pill. The quantities of some drugs suggest they are for sale and not only for personal use. Additionally, in twenty twenty-three, O C F A responded to six calls related to overdoses of drugs. The subject site has been maintained in a manner that continues to increasingly attract unlawful activity and operates as a public nuisance. Thus, Resolution eight five nine N P P D dash four thirty-five, which conditioned the motel to be in compliance with Stanton Municipal Code, has been violated. Finding three, an improvement authorized in compliance with the permit or approval is in violation of any applicable code, law, ordinance, regulation, or statute. The original permit authorized the construction and operation of a motel as a property. As demonstrated in the prior slide, the motel is being operated in violation of the Stanton Municipal Code and state law nuisance provisions. Finding four, the improvement used allowed by the permit or approval has become detrimental to the public's safety or welfare or the manner of the operation constitutes or is creating a nuisance. The motel use allowed by the original permit has become a detriment to the public's health, safety, and welfare for all the reasons provided in the video. Community groups have protested at the Dixie motel against crimes such as human trafficking and the neighboring residential property, provided a letter to the planning commission stating the negative impacts that have resulted from the nuisance activity at the site. Illicit activities at the site are an incredible drain on city resources. Calls for service at the Dixie have increased almost two hundred percent in consumed police time from fifty-nine hours in twenty nineteen to over a hundred and seventy-five hours in twenty twenty-three. This does not reflect the hours spent by city administration and staff dealing with code enforcement issues at the property. The totality of the circumstances, calls for service to Orange County Sheriff's Department and Orange County Fire Authority, the severity of the calls, i.e. human trafficking, death, stabbing, drugs, and overdoses, along with a dramatic increase of those calls constitutes a public nuisance that is harmful to the motel employees, guests, visitors, neighboring residents, and the public at large. The city of Stanton continuously seeks to find a balance between supporting its businesses and protecting the community from negative impacts and nuisance behavior. The city has made several efforts to address the nuisance activity with the owner, but unfortunately, all available data shows that the subject site has become a public nuisance and current ownership has not shown consistent efforts to secure the property or deter nuisance activity. The current state of the subject site requires immediate corrective action. The conditions of and operation of the motel use have significantly changed from its original approval in nineteen eighty-two and must now be revoked to show beneath the privilege of operating the motel at the subject site. As noted earlier in the presentation, this property qualifies as a public nuisance and staff sought action to abate the public nuisance. Again, as noted at the start of this presentation, we are here tonight because the planning commission voted to adopt Resolution number twenty-five sixty-two revoking the planning commission Resolution eight five nine, which was issued in nineteen eighty-two, allowing for the development and operation of motel use. I will now pass it on to our city attorney who will briefly discuss the appeal and potential actions for this.
Thank you, Linda Vazzo. Um, good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, there were, there was an appeal that was timely filed by the appellants in early January. And in that appeal, uh, there were a number of grounds for which they put as to why they're appealing. Many of them are constitutional in nature, and so I'd like to respond to those constitutional claims and other claims as well. I'd also like to reserve some time after our report and after the appellant's presentation to provide response to any new evidence that may come in, the new testimony that may be made. So in the appellate's appeal, one of the things that they assert is that this proposed revocation is oppressive, quote-unquote, oppressive and disproportionate and in violation of due process. Um, one of the arguments that we heard at the planning commission level was that a revocation of a permit should be one of last resort and that, you know, a city should go through the rigmarole of adding conditions and trying to work with a property owner who is inspired to revoking a permit. City staff's response to that, that this is a last resort action that city staff is proposing to this city council. What you've heard is for nearly a year, city staff tried to partner with the property owner and the tenant in trying to improve conditions on the property, making suggestions aimed at security regarding lighting, security, uh, vehicle registrations. While some of those actions were implemented by the property owner and the tenant, there were half measures that were never followed through. For example, car registrations were one of the things that city staff urged the property owner and its lessy, the management, to implement at the property. And while it appears that, uh, they may have taken some names down and, uh, you know, said, what's your name and what's your car and let me register that, they didn't take the additional step to have those cars noted with a sticker that said, I am a guest here and it's a valid registration. And it's important for these security measures to be implemented um, in order to ensure that guests are being overseen. Um, throughout the appeal and throughout their documents, they believe that, they have said, and we believe they'll continue to say, we couldn't do it anymore. But as responsible property owner and tenant, they could have and should have done more. In fact, uh, what we heard in the planning commission meeting in December was in November of twenty twenty-three, you know, months and months after the city had been asking for this, they did institute twenty-four hour security. So that was after the city had taken a few steps to show that they were serious about security measures being implemented. It wasn't until the very last minute that they did finally implement twenty-four hours. Another thing that they added into their appeal was that there was a violation substantive due process. And the issue there is one, they did not identify in their documents what protected liberty interests entitles them to substantive due process protections. And the city staff's response is that the overwhelming data and evidence demonstrates that the appellants are operating the Dixie business and property as in public nuisance as we is in the Vazzo, you know, day. Um, they said in their appeal, uh, several times, quote, the motel is not operating as nuisance. Uh, they also said that the hotel has never and is not at present operated as a public nuisance under the ownership and operations of the current property owner and the tenants. However, in correspondence as early as September twenty twenty-three, which were just a few months ago, they noted in correspondence directly to the city manager that the property was a, quote, a shitshow of drugs, homeless, and prostitution. And as now, from what I saw, it does look like nuisance, which, uh, is an admission of property conditions at the property as of fall of twenty twenty-three. And one of the things, you know, the city staff wants to note is this city spends an incredible amount of time and resources on public safety. Or that half of the city's current budget goes to bolster law enforcement, sixteen to the tune of about sixteen point four million dollars. And for, for that, each property owner and each manager is responsible for their own property. And to ensure that they are pulling their weight and putting in the resources properly overseeing their properties so that the city's law enforcement resources do not have to inordinately go to one property. And that is directly taking away from other properties within the city. There, there's need for law enforcement elsewhere, but the Dixie has shown to become a magnet for crime and public nuisance. And so, the city staff's response to their assertion that they impose no public nuisance is one, there's an admission that they are a public nuisance to the, the statistics overwhelmingly demonstrate that they are a public nuisance to the city to drain on law enforcement resources. There was a provision in their appeal that said that they did not have procedural due process because the evidence that is provided to the city council, which includes police reports, um, are, are unsubstantiated per se. The city's response to that is, or city staff's response to that is considering these police reports and statistics from Orange County Sheriff's Department is proper because the information city staff is presenting is the same information that any member of the public would also be able to obtain. Um, in order for city staff to obtain documents and statistics from Orange County Sheriff's Department, the city went through normal channels as any other member of the public would go through. That's through Orange County Sheriff's Public Records Department. Even the city received redacted information that Orange County Sheriff deemed was sensitive or had to be redacted because of investigatory privileges. And it's the same information that any member of the public would have received. So there was no procedural due process issue there. Moreover, the cities, the city council's own policies and procedures allow, um, do, do not require the technical rules and evidence to apply. Uh, the policy provides that evidence is not used in the limited sense of legally invisible evidence. Thus, it is proper for the city to use those statistics. There were some inspections done by members of the staff who observed their own eyes, public nuisance conditions on the property where there was a man lying prone at the top of the stairs, um, apparently intoxicated and embezzled to the point where, uh, staff worried that that was another dead body. Um, and as the mayor actively pointed out, there have been a number of dead bodies found at the property, um, over the years. There was a provision in their appeal that said this was a Fifth Amendment taking that taking, that revoking this man's permit is essentially taking their property beyond the valuable uses. And the city staff's response to that is that, you know, the city is authorized and even obligated under the California Constitution through its police powers to enforce and protect the public health and welfare of its citizens. The public nuisances on the property, one, they're becoming a magnet, or they have become a magnet amongst the city. They're spilling out onto hospitals, the people who have been stabbed or, or seeking services elsewhere. Um, that hotel has become known as the area where drugs can be sold, um, drugs can be done. Um, that's where police are being led into the parking lot. Apparently where violators and offenders can shelter. And so, there is no Fifth Amendment taking because without this permit, man's entitlement, it is a valuable piece of property right off Beach Boulevard, which is the busiest thoroughfare within the city as zone. It includes other uses, including retail, restaurants, commercial recreation, services, along with mixed-use residential. There is a high value for other uses on the property besides public lodging. Therefore, there is been no government taking of that. Moreover, uh, in their appeal, they noted that there had been First Amendment violations. Uh, as a little bit of background, the appellant had submitted an expansion permit to update its property and include motel uh, routes. And that has been ongoing since about, uh, July twenty twenty-two. So that has been an ongoing issue. Um, here in the appeal hearing, we are not, as city staff, getting into the expansion permit, its application, because that is not the subject of this appeal hearing. We noted it, uh, because the appellant asserted that they were given citations followed shortly after a project was initiated by the property manager and the property owner, um, instead of, quote, addressing the normal project review. And that is just patently incorrect. Again, that application came in in July twenty twenty-two. For various reasons, that application is still pending. There are items that are left to be completed in the application that have not been completed by the property owner. And here we are in twenty twenty-three after a year-long process of trying to cooperate, partner with the property owner. And after they showed that they're one unwilling or unable to implement the corrections that would alleviate the public nuisances, that is when city staff initiated revocation. So it has nothing to do with their expansion permit. Um, moreover, there, there is some discussion in the appeal about the First Amendment violation related to the gate. And, um, staff's interpretation of it is that they are somehow equating that the city started imposing citations on appellant, um, in violation of their First Amendment rights. That is what we understand the discussion to be. Uh, I want to clarify that on behalf of the city staff. Uh, there was a suggestion made to the property owner that the gate could be helpful to help guide flow in and out of the property into the parking lot, which has been shown to be a, a source of the public nuisance at very high. Uh, however, the property owner apparently put the gate up without a building permit. And just backing up, a building permit is a requirement of the California Building Code, which is adopted by the Stanton Municipal Code. There's very good reason to get permits before you put a large structure at like a gate because it's a very heavy structure. If it falls down, it can seriously injure someone. Uh, vehicles go in and out of that gate. And so it can also fall down and injure vehicles or the passengers of vehicles. More, more so, Orange County Sheriff's, sorry, Orange County Fire Authority needs to sign off on a gate because there needs to be ingress and ingress inside and out through the gate. Otherwise, emergency vehicles cannot get to the property um, and, you know, put out any fires. As you heard in Linda Vazzo's presentation, that there was an individual who bought a pipe bomb to the property threatened to build, burn the whole building down. So there is concern from Orange County Fire Authority to allow fire, emergency. So there is concern from Orange County Fire Authority to allow fire, emergency vehicles ingress and ingress in and out of the property. Or so, again, his property is right situated right off of Beach Boulevard and a gate, you know, depending on where it's situated, can easily fall into traffic on Beach Boulevard because of innumerable injuries and deaths. So there were ample reason why, after several notices and warnings to the property owner that we should not have put a gate up without permits, they did not immediately take it down, administrative citations were issued. So again, there were no First Amendment violations throughout this process. And staff asserts that, you know, that is not grounds to challenge these actions. The appeal also provides that the city has made threats as to enforcement actions that the city may take against the appellant. This is one area that we respectfully reserve time to respond to because the appeal did not provide additional evidence as to what those threats may be. There was a, an assertion that there was a Fourth Amendment warrantless searches at the property, given that, quote, "The law enforcement have been entering the hotel on a daily basis approximately read of five times a day without warrant or consent harassing the hotel guests, blocking access to the hotel, entering what guest units by force without warrant or consent." City staff's response to that is in twenty twenty-three, law enforcement, Orange County Sheriff was called out to the property alone two hundred times. So if law enforcement showed up to the property several times a day, it was because guests themselves were calling Orange County Sheriff to protect them, to help them, to, you know, aid. It was not law enforcement who was voluntarily coming onto the property, but they were called out two hundred times alone. That doesn't include Orange County Fire Authority, who was called out dozens more times in twenty twenty-three. That is the reason why there's so much law enforcement to be on this side. Finally, there was a provision in their appeal that there were some deprecatory remarks by planning commissions. They claimed that there were some remarks made against the appellant and the appellant's legal counsel. The appeal did not go into what those remarks were. City staff response here is that this appeal is brought before the city council, and they will, city staff is confident that they will get a fair hearing in this hearing, with the ability to give their full presentation in abundance of caution. As a city attorney, I'm sitting down here with special counsel advising the city council. Special counsel, Chris Natale is there in, in order to have a divider in case there's any allegations of conflict. And so our, my job here is to advise the staff and your special counsel advising the city council. And finally, you know, what, what we want to note is in the staff report, there was a note that the burden would be on the appellant to prove that there was no error or abuse of discretion by the planning commission. However, what city staff is presenting to the council right now is a full presentation of city staff's evidence and findings as to why standing this book of defiance or revocation can be met. Do you consider this to be a de novo hearing? And we recommend that the city council see it as a de novo hearing where the city council is looking at this with fresh eyes and that the city staff is, has the burden to show that the land use entitlement, as the precise plan of design, should be revoked. And with that, I wanted to note that we did want to reserve time as necessary to respond to testimony from the appellant. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to give an opportunity to any member of the public that would like to step forward on this item. You just need to state your name and let us know if you're a witness or if you're, I just remember, a Republican, is there a member of the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We close the public hearing, we need to allow the [inaudible].
Yeah, I was gonna get
Right, but we don't close the public hearing first if
Right, I just meant that.
Okay. And also, I'll just, I just want to make sure that we have a clear record in accordance with the council rules. And pursuant to the rules, the city clerk is required to mark and exhibit any documents that the parties offer in this matter. So I
I have two.
Okay. Right now, with respect to the staff report and the attachments, I assume the city would like the entire staff report with attachments. Mark does an exhibit in this hearing, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, that is correct. Would like that Mark does exhibit and put it into the [inaudible].
Okay. Additionally, I note that when city staff was making its presentation, it was, it'll have a PowerPoint presentation up for the council to see. I wanted to find out whether or not the city would like your PowerPoint presentation also marked as a separate exhibit and enter it into the [inaudible].
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We would like to mark the PowerPoint presentation that staff provided as well as the oral report by myself and Ms. Mendevaso to be entered into the [inaudible].
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then, I think, Mayor, you said you had other documents you wanted me to
Well, I think you do. I want to say
Okay, all right.
Except for one. I would like to also make sure that we put in, as we exhibit the email that was sent to city staff, sorry, [inaudible].
Oh, you need to do that as long
Yeah, just want to make sure. Okay, before we hear from the appellate, wait.
We want
Yeah, before we do that, I want to give an opportunity for any of my council members to, they have questions. But I have a couple, so that's why I would do one of those. And then something comes out that you have a question on, on the presentation, you have an opportunity, do that as well. Shall we wait for the hearing to come back?
Yes, we need to in order to make in our form.
I think that would be a great idea. All right, if anybody wants to stand up, we'll open the stands up and stretch. It's the seventh day, and then we'll get started here in a moment. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Frank Weiser, Law Office of Frank G. Weiser, on behalf of the appellants, Deebo Patel and the owner of the property, Palco Hospitality Hours, Palco LLC, and then Hospitality LLC.
I do apologize. We're gonna just take a brief second here while Mr. Taylor returns to the council chambers, and then we'll proceed. So we can give us just a few minutes, please. Thank you, sir.
Well, right now, we don't have a forum, and so the council has another forum.
Okay, so those of you that didn't hear, we have one of our council members, excuse himself momentarily for a break. And so when he comes back, we'll be able to proceed once we have a forum. So just be patient, please. Thank you. Okay, we'll be able to now continue on with the hearing because we do have a forum. Again, at this time, we're going to give the opportunity for city council members to ask questions about the presentation of the staff. Yes, bring him.
Mayor and Council, there was a discussion about city staff entering exhibits into the record, and I wanted to ensure that there was a forum when city staff did present its exhibits, so I just wanted to clarify.
It's my understanding that there was a forum at that time, but just for the record, we will know that the city staff has requested that the staff report with all its attachments be marked as an exhibit, the administrative record, as well as the PowerPoint that was presented by staff during this presentation. That will be marked.
Thank you.
As well as the email that was received by the city, and
Which I understand from the city clerk
Is already
Part of the staff report attachments.
Right. But yeah, start with that.
Yes, if you need
Okay, Mr. No. Just wanted to ask, is there anything to quantify?
Mayor and Council, that is a great question. It is difficult to quantify. You would have to, one, pull minutes from police reports on how long a certain response been took. That, again, you know that in twenty twenty-three alone, this was rising in the last few years, there were two hundred calls from four Orange County Sheriff's Department services, at least fifty-plus calls from Orange County Fire Authority. Additionally, staff has put in innumerable hours from administration, code enforcement, planning in order to respond to the public nuisance issues at the property, not including legal consultation as well. So it is difficult to quantify that, but it would be, you know, enlarging my guess.
Oh, I can help you with that because I had that same question maybe during that period of time. So I, I basically broke down what it was, and I think the average for that year was about a hundred and ninety thousand calls. So I'm not sure if that was during that exact period. I know within that year, we did spend on that type of activity, specifically on Beach Boulevard, about a hundred and ninety thousand calls. Now, I'm not saying that's at one site, but just within that collective of that area. So it's an idea. You have a question, Tom? Okay, Gary. Well, yeah, just a couple here. Is she here?
She's got down for a minute.
Oh, you did, okay. Okay, my other one was, Chief Dovin?
You asked a question?
Yeah, yeah, this one.
Do you read and respond to me? Where that testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth is the truth?
I do. There were some call out for CFA. I think I heard fifty. You know, some of the things that, that were reported were forest explosions. Was there any grievance to that? If so, what was the cause?
I would have to, I'd have to go back and look through all of the call reports when I originally ran the, it had staff run the reports. Excuse me one minute. Okay, I'll try that again. I'd have to go back and look at all the call data when I originally pulled the report, had staff pull reports. I didn't look at specifically any causes. I was just looking at the main, what were the call types and how many call types in those categories?
Okay, I, you know, I would, I personally would like to see that sometime in the future because I know that CFA is very active around the [inaudible]. I think that's something that is so
Absolutely. I'll be able to go back through the calls and then look at the actual details.
My main thing is that I exposed, you hear about these occasionally, and sort of give a good idea.
Thank you.
And Chief had a question.
Chief, at this time, if you're willing to be sworn in prior to answering any questions, that'll be you.
Do you swear that this testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, the truth?
Yes. I, just to throw up, because I have my, I have, I don't have my brain gauze, so I don't have my evidence. I noticed up there were several mentions of bodies. How many bodies were actually found at the location? What was the [inaudible]?
Those numbers I don't have at this time. I don't know what those are. Like I said, I have to, I have to research those myself to find out what the outcome, what, you know, the number and then why. But as of right now, I don't have that answer.
I think, I think all of the, the information from the CFA would also be very positive. You are still a little bit about that. Thank you. Okay, you have a question? Okay, thank you. Thank you for those presentations. At this time, we're going to have the appellate come forward, please, and make a presentation. You have as much time as you need.
Yes, once again, Frank Weiser, Law Office of Frank G. Weiser, on behalf of the appellants and owner and operators in the property, Deebo Patel, who's present, California One Hospitality LLC, which is her LLC and family's LLC, and Mega Hospitality LLC, which is the on-site operator of the property, this is right here, operates that. I, given the staff's analysis of my appeal letter, I am going to go through point by point hopefully of what staffing raised in relation to that letter. The first issue was the issue of proportionality. I had raised in a letter a case called Bauer, which is the city of San Diego, seventy-five F third, twelve ninety-one, and twelve eighty-one, excuse me, and in twelve eighty-nine, Bauer dealt with the revocation of the additional use permit standards. And the general standard here in California, but based on due process, substantive due process, is that it's got to be proportionate. Certainly, a city has a right to regulate private nuisances or public nuisances that are affecting the public. Nobody doubts that as a matter of law, but that it's got to be proportional and it's got to be weighed against the impact of a property owner. And the, any conditions that are placed on the property owner have to be proportional and not oppressive. That's the language about at page twelve eighty-nine. And to that effect, I would argue that as a matter of law, in this particular case, the revocation of a permit without any limitation is certainly oppressive, and that is because under California law. California law is very clear that putting a business owner on business for purposes of operation of a public use is limited one year. Red Light Abatement Act, the Health and Safety Noco Act, and various cities that implement those laws in regulating their permits and licenses limited to a year. For example, the city of Los Angeles, which I've dealt with many times for other motels through the years, presently also, any kind of a revocation is limited to one year based on the fact that California law is, has that limitation. And the reason is, is that the idea of regulating of the nuisance is also for purposes of remediating, not only for the public but for the property owner, not to put them totally out of business. So I would submit, respectfully submit, that the revocation here without any limitation goes against California law and goes against well-established practices here in the state and under the due process clause dealing with the Bauer case. There's another case There's another case I did not cite in my uh appellate review, and that is a case called Kuntz versus St. John's River District Management. It's a U.S. Supreme Court case in five seventy United States reports at five nine, uh, five eighty, ninety-five. It's a twenty thirteen case. Supreme Court says that both under the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Fourteenth Amendment, substantive component of the procedural due process clause, this proportionality principle has to be implied. There's got to be an essential nexus between what the city or the government does and imposes on the property owner. And that requires that conditions not be too onerous. And then I think the, the, the major problem we have with staff, we wanted to work with the staff. We wanted to work with the city. We're not looking here to pick a fight. We're not looking here to litigate with the city. Uh, but as a first instance, where you drag somebody in and then you say to them that, okay, your property is operating as a nuisance, and let's assume it is. The first instance is not to revoke the permit completely and put them on business. Uh, and even under the cases that I cited, the statutes I cited under the NARCO Act, Red Light Abatement Act, a judge has got to weigh first, are there less sonorous conditions that can be placed to remediate the problem? That's what the Bowers case, that's also. So um, our position is, even if we assume in arguendo that this property is a nuisance, although we're going to contend, as Ms. Patel was going to testify on the facts, that she's taken steps here that it's not, certainly not a present nuisance, or what in fact was the activity that the city is claiming she disputes uh in general. But assuming it is, in arguendo for legal arguments, you don't just drag somebody in and take away their permit and put them out of business as a first instance. Uh, and as anecdotal evidence, I would submit, I just had an interview on Channel Four NBC News for a group of motels in Figaro corridor of Valway, Lee Lopez, the investigative reporter interviewed me and the city attorney, Heidi Feltschke, and Soto at the City of Valway. And Soto went on uh, on, on tape to the public and says, we're not here in, interested in putting people out of business as a first instance. And I think that's the rational, balanced way most cities work, uh, that they will not just simply put them on business. Now, city may impose conditions, and sometimes those conditions can be pretty harsh to make sure that the property doesn't operate in the future the way the city is, believes it has. I had one case of a motel in San Diego Valley where during COVID, there were two murders. The city didn't put them on business. They imposed certain conditions. It was worked out. Property owner didn't go out of business, and it was satisfied, satisfactory to the city and to the public. So I would submit that this issue of we try to work with the owner, as my understanding, this is the first time Ms. Patel, the owner of the property, the licensee, has come before this council or before the planning commission where the city is saying, hey, your pro- property is a problem, alleged problem. But there was never any history before that. Other cities, as I said, City of Valway, if LAPD feels that a property is not working well, they will bring them into the division, they'll give them the riot act, tell them, hey, look, your property is not doing well. Here's our suggested uh improvements, and if you don't, then we go to court. We take whatever other action, but not to put them out of business in the first instance. So that's my main argument on substantive due process of taking. Now, the Fifth Amendment has another component to it. It's not just the substantive due process of Kuntz and Bowers. But the uh law is well uh settled that a nuisance does not necessarily constitute a taking. Property is operated as a nuisance, it's not a Fifth Amendment taking. I understand that. But other authority, a case called Penn Central Transportation Company versus City of New York, subsequent case to old Supreme Court authority going back in nineteenth century. Nineteen seventy-eight case, four thirty-eight, U.S. Reports at one oh four. Is that you balance the character of the regulation, it can be a constitutional regulation. The city has a right to impose conditions to regulate a property because it's a nuisance against the investment expect, expectations of the owner and the character of, of basically what they expected to operate the property. Ms. Patel will testify here tonight that they have spent, I believe, well over three million dollars in this property, in buying this property, uh, upgrading the property and attempting to work with the city. And if you put her on business, that all goes away. And I would argue respectfully that the Penn Central test, even if the city has the right to regulate an alleged nuisance, it still shouldn't go so far. It can still be a regulatory taking as an ordinance that goes too far. And putting someone out of business is the harshest of remedies. But that's our argument on the takers part. Now, turning to um equal protection, uh, and there was a fourth, and it ties in with this Fourth Amendment claim. Didn't just make this up out of the air. Uh, I think if I understood staff correctly, they recognized that uh law enforcement came onto the property. They said, because of the alleged problems on the property, put on a regular basis over and over again. Uh, so the question is, does that become a search under the Fourth Amendment? Generally speaking, I would get in the case in the Ninth Circuit years ago in the city of Montclair, where the parking lot is not considered to be uh subject to what they call common law trespass disorder test. It doesn't necessarily trigger a Fourth Amendment law. But there is authority in the U.S. Supreme Court, in the U.S. v. Jones case, twenty twelve case, that if you come on too many times, the cumulative effect of coming on so many times and gathering evidence can be a search. If it's a search, then subject to the Fourth Amendment and to the requirement that you have to get a court order before you can use evidence uh doing so. And I would argue, if I understood staff correctly, that there were some two hundred times that law enforcement came on uh in twenty twenty-three, that that has that cumulative effect. There's another case called uh United States versus Carpenter, with the U.S. Supreme Court said in twenty eighteen, when you collect cell data and cellular phones, the cumulative effect of so much data that's collected becomes a search subject to the Fourth Amendment. I would argue that's the case here. Um, that also goes to equal protection. Uh, there's very strong case law in the Ninth Circuit. Uh, that's the United States Court of Field Ninth Circuit. I had a case with Telvis in Penn in nineteen ninety-six, and it was used in subsequent authorities. But um, for example, police come to a bar. A bar doesn't necessarily have Fourth Amendment protections because it's open to the public. But the cumulative effect of cases where the police come so many times and are on the property so many times without having authority from the court, that that can actually be not a Fourth Amendment violation, but also an equal protection law. And we would argue that here, I think what you're going to hear from Mrs. Patel is that her frustration, she was trying to work with the city, and the effect was is that everything was coming on her, that she was not allowed to work with the city, not given the opportunity to do so. And then this proceeding occurred. Um, turning to the First Amendment issue, I think that is a little bit more complex. I'm not arguing free speech rights. I'm not arguing association rights. You don't have an associational right to allow, bring individuals on the property per se. What I'm arguing is the petition and grievances clause right under the First Amendment. And I cited a case around Gasco's versus Morgan in eight seventy-four, a second, uh, thirteen ninety-five Ninth Circuit case. She applied for a permit to expand the property. She was trying to improve the property. That permit languished with the city. City manager did not allow her, basically blocked her from being able to get the permit fully uh applied to do good things on the property. And then when she started to voice her objections, why am I being treated this way? Uh, that's when the pressure really came. Um, and that's when this issue of the gate came up. She was blocked, as I think she will testify, from even accessing uh the city website. I don't know if the website, the email. Uh, being able to email the city manager or city officials, which is uh totally unheard of. Uh, and I think that raises certain First Amendment issues also. But she was also, she, she tried to put in a gate for purposes of helping the city and addressing issues. She was trying to cooperate. She uh contacted the police department, or I guess it's the sheriff's department. Uh, she was trying to be cooperative, and then when she put up the gate, she was told she didn't have the proper permits. And that led to citations. We appealed it, I must say, that's not final. Uh, I've appealed it to a court yet, already, but in a timely fashion. And under the government codes, you're entitled to a de novo hearing. So that is not, I think, evidence that's a final issue about the citation. But from a practical standpoint, she was trying to work with the city. Um, so I just got a problem about where we are here. Why is she being dragged in to just put her out of business in the first instance? I didn't hear anything from the staff about police meeting with her, staff meeting with her, bringing her to a planning commission to impose conditions on her permit. None of that occurred. It was just a one-shot instance, you're a nuisance, and as a matter of law, since you're a nuisance, therefore, we, we're going to put you on business. And as I said, I think uh it's constrained still by these constitutional requirements under the supremacy. Now, finally, um, this issue about procedural due process. And, you know, I'm an advocate here, I have to advocate for her. Once again, I respect the city, I'm not here to pick a fight. Obviously, I've got to protect her interests. The evidence that was being presented here on police reports and calls for service are redacted evidence. Now, I don't know about under California law, but my position is in the federal courts at least. The redacted evidence raises an issue about whether there's a meaningful opportunity. Meaningful opportunity. U.S. Supreme Court case law says, procedural due process clause doesn't only require a right, notice an opportunity to be heard and respond, but a meaningful opportunity to respond. We got redacted evidence, you can't match the names on the reports with what you have on your registration cards, who came to your motel, to be able to determine whether that evidence is correct or not correct, impacts her right uh for a meaningful opportunity to respond. So that's the basis of my procedural due process argument. And then the issue about the deprecatory remarks at the, at the planning commission. I, I, I have no problem with the commission or with this council or with this city. As I said, we don't want to fight with the city. We'd rather not have any kind of a litigation with the city. But there were deprecatory marks, and this issue that is somehow cured by this council is totally against Ninth Circuit case law. There's a case of Clements versus uh Airport Authority of Wausau County. It's at sixty-nine F third, uh, and uh sixty-nine F third, we made ninety-one. It's a nineteen ninety-five Ninth Circuit case. The Ninth Circuit says that a biased administrative quasi-judicial hearing, that is biased, even if it is cured in a court of law, even if they can go to a court of law and have a de novo hearing, if it was a like the slate claim, and whatever happened at the administrative level, they, no deference given. It still is violation of procedural due process. So my submission is, is that the remarks that indicated bias or a recent appearance of bias by the planning commission uh issues uh the determination by the planning commission under the process. So that all being said, I mean, all these constitutional arguments, as I said, you know, are just made for the record. I would, I would urge the council to exercise your uh, your power and authority here, which I'm sure you've never done in the past wisely, to don't put her, put her on business. Don't put these people on business in the first instance. If you feel that you've gotten to balance the public interest versus the private interest, do it in a way that's proportionate. This is the first time this motel has performed this closely. This is not where you drag them in, you try to work with them, you put conditions. I think you should really seriously consider, is there a way to put reasonable conditions on this to address it? That would satisfy what you consider to be the complicated versus the private property. And I'm going to ask uh this Patel, Ms. Patel, to come up to talk more about the history of her interactions and what she uh was dealing with with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, the top priority is a campaign, we're going to ask you to swear it.
Do you read your right hand and respond to me? Do you swear that this testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and the truth?
Hello, Council, and um, Mr. Mayor, I'm finally happy to meet you. I know that you're doing well. I know we've been trying to connect a while now, so. But I'm here, I'm able to be here to share my side of the story of what's uh, what I've been dealing with with this property. Um, I bought this property in two thousand sixteen, and it was uh the nice in at that time. And the reason for purchasing this property was because I saw opportunity. I saw opportunity in the city. I saw opportunity um with this particular property because um the parking lot was big. There was uh space to expand this property. Um, my specialty are properties that are fixers, so this property was in very bad condition when I, when I purchased it. And um, I spent one year just observing the property, seeing what the potential was, until I finally decided that I wanted to move forward and um really create a permanent space um in the city and with my brand, um, the Dixie. And um, the Dixie is a tribute to my older sister who was killed by a drunk driver. So it's um very near and dear to my heart. We established the Dixie Hollywood first, and this is the second property that I've been trying to establish and expand. Um, we created the Dixie, um, and I put in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars the first year on renovating all the rooms, renovating, getting a new sign, um, just creating uh an upgrade to enhance, you know, for the local area. The um, the front of the hotel, we did a little bit of a, a base lift with over there. And then I decided, um, after running the property, it was doing really well, we weren't having any issues, that um, in order to continue with the expansion of it, uh, I had to lease the property so I can um have the time and availability to work and focus on expanding the property sixteen more units. Um, I'm also a full-time psychologist, and I also manage my real estate portfolio, so leasing was the best option. So I took some time to find the best tenants um in two thousand nineteen. And for a year, I had somebody running it, and I had a very close eye um on the way that they operated it. I had a very strict um lease agreement with a lot of like rules, basically saying that we couldn't get citations. They had to run it, you know, strict code of, of everything, you know, in detail. But in two thousand twenty, once COVID hit, um, they, the business just completely slowed down, and they couldn't um afford the lease payment anymore. So overnight, they basically handed me the keys. And I um, during COVID, basically moved on to the property myself to run it twenty-four hours for probably about a month and a half. And during that time, I was able to really see a lot of what was going on in the city and um what the, what some of the issues we were facing. And um, just in general, I counted on how the property operated. And so um, I, I, I ran it for a little while, and then I decided, okay, you know, the property stabilized, the area stabilized, you know. Even though we were having a lot of like issues with homeless and um people coming onto the property, I um, I decided I was going to lease it again and just, you know, see, see if I can continue on this, on, on planning, set up the property. So I leased it to the current tenants right now, um, in two thousand twenty-one, I believe, or twenty-two. And um, I, I've been focused on getting the expansion. I think we've submitted plans like ten times already, um, and, and working with the architect. And I wasn't coming to the property, you know, every month. Maybe I would come like every month and a half, but I would still check in to see how things were going. Um, what I did notice, though, every time I came to the city was that not only were we having property, um, issues on our property with whatever it was, the homeless or any um lease coming onto the property, um, or any of these issues that we've been talking about in this meetings. But I also noticed that over the years of me owning this property, that the city started to have these issues in general, just driving down Beach Boulevard, it just started to, I just started to see a lot more um of the drugs and the homelessness and the prostitution. Um, but at the same time, what I really loved also was the fact that I saw the city. But at the same time, what I really loved also was the fact that I saw the city was expanding and doing good. There were a lot of new buildings at the rodeo thirty-nine. All of this happened while I owned my property. So I continued to see the potential. And so, you know, it's kind of like the property that you guys are showing me on here is really not the property that I own and I see and I operate, you know. A lot of these issues, like, for example, the, one of the first issues is like the hotel comparison that you guys do with the Villa and the Starlight, like, where, you can't compare those properties to my property. It's not apples to apples. The Starlight and Villa are two small properties that, that aren't, they don't function as like real hotels like that rent daily. They basically have, and I know this because the property owners are just colleagues and friends of my family, but they basically have the same tenant that's staying month after month, and they just pay a weekly rate. And they function like apartments, like, you wouldn't even find these properties on the online portals for people to rent on a daily basis. So it's really different from the way that the Dixie tries to operate, you know, as like more of a motel. And the other issue was, oh, the one that kept coming up, I know, you know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned several times, was the dead body on the property. And February ninth, what had happened was there was a homeless man that had entered the property, and he walked, you know, the parking lot's huge, so he's walking around on the property, and he ended up in the swimming pool area where we have some chairs, and he sat down on a chair, and he ended up dying on the property, like, this wasn't even a yes. So we were able to call, you know, we did what we had to do. We saw somebody sick in the swimming pool. We called the ambulance. He was dead. Like, how's that our fault? How's that held against us as the homicides happen on our property? As far as the prostitution, so our managers can't discriminate against who they rent rooms to. I mean, we shouldn't discriminate in general. And even on top of that, there is a law, the S.P. three five seven, which is the safer streets for all acts, which prohibits even the police from pulling anyone over that looks like a prostitute. So if, you know, if there's prostitution going on on the hotel, I've mentioned several times in meetings that I've had with the city manager or anybody in the city that if you guys feel that our property has prostitution, then come and do a raid, because this isn't something that I want at our property. I know that there was a protest that you guys mentioned as well. And the protest wasn't a protest against my property specifically. If you look on the Facebook page, the protest is specifically in the, for the city of Stanton. And they went to all the businesses walking up and down the city of Stanton. And what's ironic is that the pictures that were put up in the Dixie of the protest happening in, at the Dixie wasn't even a picture that they had on their, on their website or on their Facebook page. You know, I believe it was the city council person behind us that snapped the picture and, you know, presented it just to kind of push this agenda that we're dealing with. There are a lot of improvements and suggestions that we've taken. You know, one of the biggest ones in the beginning was the lighting, you know, as soon as I met with the city manager. Like, the parking lot's dark, let's put a lighting. I called the leasing. Thankfully, our leasing has been cooperative and willing to work with us, but the leasing, you know, brightened the parking lot completely up. The vehicle registration, we have to take ID, credit card, and vehicle information and put it in our property management system. There is no requirement to have a permit, but we, you know, we put everything in the registration. They're in the cards. The garbage, that one picture, it's very disturbing to see because you can go to the property and the property does not look like that. It's just the worst representation of what really this property is. The day that the garbage, the picture of the garbage was taken, we have been having issues with the waste management companies since I took this property over. I mean, I have numerous emails to the waste management company begging them to come and service our property because the garbage was overflowing, and they didn't come the day they're supposed to. So we're assuming they're going to be here on the Monday morning or the Tuesday morning, and that's enough garbage for that area to, you know, stay clean. But if they don't show up till Wednesday and Thursday, and I'm calling and calling and calling and asking them, please come, like, we're trying to run a business here. We cannot have our garbage overflowing like this. Like, how is that my fault? We can't hire a company outside of what you guys provide to come and take care of the garbage. And eight, nine, ten, eleven o'clock in the morning, people are checking out. We're a motel. We can't have somebody twenty-four seven walking after our customers, like, sweeping up every single piece of garbage on the floor at eight twelve o'clock. Once everyone checks out, there's a maintenance routine that happens. So a lot of these things are just like, I mean, we're running a business every day. We're doing what we need to do to maintain the property. There was a situation about the pipe bombs. I would love to, you know, find out more detail and more evidence of that. I know we do have video footage of that, I believe, but there was somebody that ran onto the property with like a bottle of wine and threw it behind the garbage can and then left. And the property was shut down or closed off for hours under an assumption. But this isn't, there was no pipeline. There was no issue like this. The property has had more than numerous situations where somebody's ran onto the property, and I don't know if this is just rain or if this is something, I mean, I've got to the point where I don't know what's truly happening and what's, what people are making happen at my property. And it's sad that I have to have this kind of perception, you know, of politics and the city. But, you know, there's so many times that something's happened, it's like, if there's somebody behind my garbage can with a gun, why are you, why is the police out there with guns raised for fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes calling me to see video footage? Shouldn't you have a helicopter out immediately if it's posing a threat? So, you know, this is, it's unfair that we're being harassed in this way. The hotel manager's job is not to discriminate, it's to rent a room to anyone that's able, you know, to provide ID and payment, and in hopes that that person's going to rent the room to find a place to rest. We have no control over what they do once they check in. Of course, if we see anything outside of the hotel room or there's anything suspicious going on, then we're going to alert them that they have to check out the next day, you know, this is not that type of establishment. But like, once they're in there, or if they've stolen something and driven into our parking lot, and the police come and run their, run their car, you know, license plate, it's how, how is it, how are we supposed to prevent that? How are we supposed to judge the character of these people and rent these rooms? That doesn't work like that. It's not our responsibility to do that. I have to give a place that's clean and, you know, and just hope that that's what's happening. And what's really concerning is that, you know, the thing about us calling the police and it being held against us, and now it's gotten to the point where I'm fighting for my property to be able to stay open, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have business owners in this city or any city be put in a position where we're afraid to call the police because we have to think twice before, before wondering if we call. I mean, that's the place that we're in. We had to, we had to hire this security company for twenty-four hours. It's beyond what the hotel can afford, beyond what the hotel can make. We've gotten loans to be able to do this, and we've had zero service calls since we've implemented this. But it's out of this fear that if there was something going on at my property, I can't call the police anymore because this is, this is what I'm in, in the situation. You know, I mentioned a lot in the planning commission, and I don't want to get into the details of the harassment that I feel and the unfairness that I feel that I've gotten from the city staff and all the obstacles that I've dealt with in public record. But, you know, I, I've been trying to work in every way possible to fix this situation, considering I have a tenant and the tenant's cooperating. I want a better property for this, for this city. I could have kept it in the condition that it was in seven, eight years ago when I bought it, but my dream was to create and beautify this property for this city. And so to attract better clientele and to attract, you know, higher revenue, and in turn, that would give, you know, more, more money to the city and also the jobs. I mean, I, we have about ten to fifteen employees that come on and off the property that all pretty much live in the city of Stanton. So by shutting us down, like, not only are you taking away this investment of over three, three to five million dollars that my family and I have put into this property, but also the amount of jobs that your local residents are, have. So, I mean, at this point, I'm basically urging you guys. I didn't want to get to a point where I had to like have a lawyer and fight for this and this situation, but I guess this is my last plea to ask that, you know, let's, let's figure this out, let's work this out. And, you know, let's figure out a fair way for my property to stay open. I'm, I've always said this, and I will continue to say it. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to cooperate, and I have been. But we, you know, to just get to a point where you're, you know, you just want to take the rug out from underneath my feet is extremely unfair. And if we can work this out, that's great. If we can't, then, you know, fortunately, it's just going to have to lead to other parties involved, and we can go from there. But, you know, this is all that I can really, I think, I'm also very just frustrated and tired of just trying to continue to defend this over and over and over for years now. And, you know, there's not much else I can say. If you guys have any questions, please shoot. If not, then I wish the situation the best. Thank you.
I just have a couple of really short questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You mentioned the fact that you spend a lot of the time managing your holdings, and you also have a profession of, when you talk to a psychiatrist, of a portfolio. Would you then, that being said, would you describe yourself as an absentee or?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, we'd like to thank you very much for appearing here before us this evening, and we will be making a decision very shortly.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Well, if you have an opportunity to ask questions, if they want to.
I have also just one more quick question, if you don't mind. Thank you. Please. Thank you. Do you know how big Stanton is and where our population is?
Three and a half square miles. Yeah, three and a half square miles, I believe, and then the population number, I don't know. I know that it's a small couple of streets this way and a small side this way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Can you break and tell me about the street? So now, if we do, we'll be interested in anybody else here who would like to speak in favor or not.
Is there anyone that's here that would like to speak in favor or in, for the appeal or against the appeal?
None. And I believe that city staff has requested an opportunity to respond to some of the comments and more evidence presented by the county, to try to call out some of that.
If you ask a question, is it the appellate having a chance to respond after you?
If there's more evidence of the county, we'll speak to that.
Okay, great. So at this time, we'll hear from our city staff responding to what was just said.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, for the opportunity to respond to some of the appellate's comments. I'm going to respond to some of the legal argument that appellate's attorney made, and then Ms. Landebazza will provide some of the factual detail. And so, you know, one of the things that the appellate's counsel said was, you know, under other laws such as the Red Light Abatement Act, there should be more time for them to kind of mitigate or alleviate these type of issues. I wanted to remind the city council that we're proceeding under the Stanton Municipal Code that allows, that has a full provision in chapter on revocation of permits. The findings are before city council, the city staff has believed that it has more been fulfilled its burden of proof to show that there's ample evidence that the findings before you have been fulfilled for revocation. Moreover, the Stanton Municipal Code doesn't have any requirement that there has to be modifications, conditions, or even anything of that, like, prior to a revocation. I wanted to remind the city council of staff's presentation that certainly city staff, and Ms. Landebazza is willing to speak to it more comprehensively, that city staff has been working hand in hand with the property owner for the better part of two thousand twenty-three seeking before having to put this up for revocation. Property owners voluntary compliance with putting in simple security measures that would greatly alleviate the public nuisances. And for the reasons that they stated here, whether they were unwilling or unable or did not have finances to do it, they, they didn't. Moreover, in terms of the Fifth Amendment issues, the case law is clear that no matter how much money a property owner is putting into a property, they cannot just have carte blanche to operate it as a public nuisance. Again, the evidence here that has been provided by law enforcement in the city is that there's been nearly two hundred calls to the property in two thousand twenty-three alone. There was a question from the council member of how much did that cost the city? At the very least, in two thousand twenty-three, the consumed time from Orange County Sheriff was a hundred and seventy-five hours. That was a hundred and seventy-five hours that could have been dispersed to other portions of the city that needed law enforcement as well. And instead, Orange County Sheriff became de facto security for the Dixie Motel, and the city's law enforcement should not be anybody's private security detail. They need to provide their own security measures. Moreover, there was, you know, I believe that Mrs. Landebazza is going to speak about the permit issues with the expansion. Again, that's not before the city council, but because it's been raised by appellate, we note that there have been proper legal processes observed. There have been incomplete letters that have noted why the letter or the application is incomplete. And in many of those incomplete letters, if not all, one of the very first comments are there are security issues at the property that need to be mitigated. Opposing or appellate's counsel talked about, again, these deprecatory remarks. Again, these are broad, vague assertions. City staff can't respond to them because we are not aware of what those deprecatory remarks are. And with that, one of the things that was noted was, you know, the evidence that the city staff has presented and redacted police reports. Again, we note from a legal perspective, the city went through all the proper channels in order to obtain in order to obtain the evidence and and findings from Orange County Sheriff and Orange County Fire Authority. Those are the same channels that any member of the public, including appellant's and the appellant's counsel, would go through to obtain that evidence. Uh, to the extent there are any objections asserted to the evidence, staff requested the council make note of the objection by the party and give the evidence the way to which it's entitled. It is entitled, taking reliability of the evidence into consideration. And we have a memo from Orange County Sheriff dated uh November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three that was within the staff report, the attachments, which are the exhibit to uh the administrative record. But it details for since twenty nineteen, the years, 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 calls for service and consumed time. And those numbers tick up, up and up. From fifty calls for service in twenty nineteen to a hundred and sixteen in twenty twenty-three, the consumed time is is increasing as well as the number of arrests and citations. And with that, I would like to uh pass my point on to Mrs. Landebazo.
I can interrupt a minute. Uh, I just want to make sure that our record is clear. And if um you're going to be hearing testimony that's not part of your documents, that were completely evidence, I can totally agree uh for the city park to swear in this case as well. City could sit there and use you.
I believe um everything that's going to be referenced is already a part of the staff report, but out of caution.
We're going to recess for about five minutes, if you don't mind. The restrooms are out the door to the right, the ladies to the left, out the door to the right. Okay, welcome back. Again, we're in the public hearing phase. Counsel, do you have anything?
At this time, we're getting this morning's.
All right, okay, let's go ahead. I just give the council an opportunity.
Please, can you respond to me? I swear that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is true.
In regard to the um comments that were raised by the the property owner during her turn to speak, uh, I think one of the things that that was most reflective during all of the comments that were provided is that it seemed to strike me as very reflective of most of the communication that she's had with staff throughout past year. Um, most of it was describing the uh reasons why there was an inability to correct most of the issues that were on the property. Um, it it was noted that there were many lists of reasons why something wasn't being completed. The unsightly conditions on the subject site property were because of the trash collar. The um activity that occurred on the subject site was because O C S D needs to change their operations. Uh, you know, they can bring out helicopters for everything. There's certain responses, always critiques that seem to be um coming up at um owing everybody else. There's. Yeah, there's um. There's issues with regard to not being able to follow people to to make sure that the property is being maintained. There's an issue that uh the property was closed based on an assumption when there was a pipeline that was down on the property. It it's critique as opposed to understanding that O C S D is there to make sure that they're ensuring for safety. If there is uh an incident such as a pipeline, obviously, they're going to be secure in the property. They're going to ensure that there isn't any additional damage to human life. But that instead was taken and there was a critique made against closing down the property um and feeling as though there is some sort of um harm or discrimination that was that was caused by it or that led to something that wasn't intended to to protect human life. Um, there there's always um assumptions that uh there is, that there's no property ownership responsibility. The city deals with property owners of different types of properties, commercial, industrial, residential throughout the city. And there's all accountability that is required in all conversations. City staff attempts to always partner with the property owners. And in that partnership is the actual order. So the city provides guidance, the city provides direction, and we assist in following proper receiveds to ensure that permits are full, permits are obtained. Um, and and many of the interactions that have occurred, and many of what we have seen um in the staff report is that there have been lots of different forms of communication. There have been direct phone calls with our city manager. There have been letters that have been filed for the separate um expansion application that has been done. Five separate letters were sent out um building in the filing of the application. There was no discriminatory action in in any of those letters. Most of those letters, you'll find, have the exact same corrections for all five letters that were issued out, meaning that the corrections that were given were not addressed. They were ignored and the same items were submitted or they were submitted without the full correction being done. Staff, again, in its attempts to try to partner with the property owner and have a successful project. Um, I myself, along with um the uh project planner, had a meeting with the property owner and all of her uh application team. We went through each correction one by one, discussing what the correction was there for, what it was addressed to on the plan, and how they would be able to address it and to have a successful application that can be brought forward. Again, that is not what is before the the city council tonight. But that, again, is just explaining that there has been communication, there has been partnership on cities that have. However, the response that is always that the city is asking for change or there's offense to the questions or the standards that are being asked by the city. Um, one of the items that's noted by our city attorney was that every single correction letter identified that there are existing security issues on the property and that a security plan had to be provided um so that we can see how the properties want to be remedied, how all the issues were going to be corrected, and how we would make sure that there is a security plan in place to prevent these items from occurring in the future, particularly with a planned expansion. Um, in none of those occasions was the property owner able to provide something that had any kind of um substantial security plan to it. We didn't, there was no identification that security would be provided. Again, November tenth of last year, after dealing with the city for over a year after being told there were nuisances and um from the activity and concerns on the property, it wasn't until November tenth, twenty twenty-three, that security was finally applied on the property. And again, as part of the testimony tonight, it was indicated that this is a great burden for property owners, this is a great burden to have to have accountability and responsibility for protecting their own subject site, their own property. Property ownership requires a certain amount of accountability. And that's what we work with all of our other business owners. All of our business owners are able to understand communication with staff. Some of them do have different different missions and they understand financial concerns and and business operations and different things. Staff works with an array of of residents, property owners, business owners. And we most of the time are able to find um a path forward so that we can get to successful businesses, we can get successful projects moving forward. Unfortunately, most of these interactions, there seems to always be a reason why something is is not possible or there seems to be somebody else to join the the trash or O C S D for their their operations and ways things are done. One of the emails, again, that was sent from the property owner to our city manager, the quotation here says, as we are being asked for things that no other city has asked for, security plan, details must be included, details about design. It feels so controlling to the point where if they want to nip it on the details of future upgrade, is the city going to future require management if they want the details their way opposed to our own vision? Again, security plan, land sweeping, design details, those are standard in every single application that comes before um the the prime commission or gets submitted to the planning counter and the building counter. Uh, these are all standard items, but the 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 rebuttal has always been, the response has always been that the city is asking for too much and I think it's too difficult uh to comply with any of these items. Uh, I I hope that provides a little bit of of clarification for the city council. Discrimination is never something that the city attempts to do. We, again, have gone out of our way to try to partner with our different revenues. The reason why we called meeting with the property owner and her um and her application team was because we were trying to find that path forward. We do that with many of our other businesses together, struggling, or if they want to choose something else. We ask them if they want to come in, have a meeting, sit down so that we can find a way to make this work. Unfortunately, after about a year of attempting this, we haven't been able to to make this work. And the the city was at a point where we needed to ensure that we were trying to um find resolutions so that we would stop having this public nuisance that just continued to grow. And as part of the hesitation, the the numbers were growing exponentially. So waiting on the new revenue was 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 a a cavitation with the city just working.
I'd like to respond.
Again, at this time, if there's anyone else from the audience that'd like, or the public would like to comment, please come forward.
So um I know that, you know, there was an issue about the security, the security plan that is being brought up right now. I submitted a security plan. I submitted um the details of the security plan specific to what was sent to me. And when um the plans came back to us and said a security plan was not submitted. So my architect went into the office and talked to somebody and got proof that the security plan was submitted. So I, I mean, these are, these are just the simple challenges and simple issues that we've been having. Um, so that, you know, this is, it's, it's, this is a bunch of lies, basically. You know, I'm not going to sit here and listen to half this stuff. Uh, there's two sides of the story. And I'm not making up excuses for either anything. If if the trash doesn't get picked up, there's trash in my garbage can. Like what, 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 there's no excuse for that. So, um, I just want to put on the record that a lot of what you guys are bringing up, you know, at this point, I I don't want to sit here and listen to lies being told back to me. And it's extremely unfair. And again, I'm frustrated because you guys are just, you know, this is completely biased. Everything, there's nobody in this room that's that's forming. And there isn't any biased gears in here. So unfortunately, anything that I'm saying is is not even being taken, you know, in a way that is truthfully heard.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address uh the city council on this item?
Hey, I just want to add one thing to the evidence here. Um, there is a security firm at this hotel prior, when I came on board, I think it was September. I don't know what I understand, there are no significant calls for service. Uh, she has a security firm that checks the property on a regular basis during the day, uh, and evening and actually stays there. Uh, and I haven't heard anything about the statistics on that. Um, as far as what goes on in inside rooms, those rooms are at Emin Hotel, Moncler case I've litigated, the ninth circuit held, those are all subject for the living protection. But I didn't hear anything significant as far as registration requirements. Normally, what you see in a city where they have problems with prostitution uh inside the motel rooms is that the hotel owner is not keeping the proper records, not registering the people properly, they're skirting the requirements. Uh, there was no evidence that the city put out to that effect. It's my understanding that they are registering the cake IDs, they take all the proper information. And once again, what goes on inside the room, not that they countenance or agree that criminal activity can go on, but that there's no evidence that what's inside the room they have violated anyways. You know, under the UNRWA, this is a problem in the Figueroa corridor that I told you about. It's on NBC News uh back in November. The city even agrees, and you can't discriminate against somebody coming out of property unless you know they're going to be engaging in criminal activity. You can't just simply refuse because if you do, you're going to be sued under California Civil Code fifty-one and fifty-two under the UNRWA. But I didn't hear any evidence from the city. And what leads to this criminal activity? Is it that the hotel owner is not registering the people? Is it that they are somehow engaging with people coming onto the property? Uh, so I don't think there's sufficient evidence on that. And what I understand, they are keeping the proper records. Uh, and they are attempting to do what the rights, what's right. Once again, uh, I would urge the council to uh wait and consider a year to make a strike of proper balance. Not that we're admitting that it is a nuisance, but if the council does feel that way, then it strikes a balance here between the public and private interest. Uh, and then finally, this issue about the red light abatement law. Um, even though you're not bound by the city of L A's procedures, but I think the interpretation by the city of L A where they revoke permits for only a year is that their view is, is that that state law does preempt. There's a limitation on the scope of revocation. Can't be just an open-ended, put them out of business forever. Uh, and that's what the state law is all about, that that this balancing between mediating the nuisance versus protecting the public. So I would respectfully ask the council to consider.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, this guy, quick question. Um, Michelle's not here, right?
She's available for poster.
Have a good day. Thank you. Okay.
If you'd like to answer, I swear that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is true, the whole truth, and the truth.
I do think. Yes, it's true.
I know you might.
So we're kind of busy, didn't you state your name for the record?
I am Michelle, again, the city's finance director.
Michelle, I know you probably don't have this in top of your head, but maybe since you do take care of occupancy tax, that's your responsibility. Are you having recollection of the records on property taxes that were either paid over a period of time, been recently by the Dixie Motel?
Are you talking about property taxes or transient occupancy taxes? I do, we do keep a monthly analysis of um the Dixie Orange County. I can tell you anecdotally that they are our number two um highest transient occupancy tax rate payer out of all of the um lodging facilities in the Stan in Stanton. And um that is going back um since before the project home key, around the, since Project Home Key. Because since those Project Home Key properties, those hotels became Project Home Key. They've been one of our top two um providers. And they have consistently been on time most of the last four years that I've been here, when that's how long we've been maintaining the monthly tracking um and record keeping for that revenue.
And proportionally, what portion of that were long-term stays versus, you know, in other words, we we have a rule where we kick in at a certain point of the time. Do you have any recollection of that?
I do not, I don't know if that's on the form because our form does not exclude those residents that stay more than thirty days. Our ordinance does not have that exception like some other city ordinance system.
Okay.
So we are getting the tax rate for all of the room tranches that are applicable to.
Can I just curious about any long-term presence? A lot of those hotels and hotels have that pattern. I feel appreciated. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to address the city council on this item? As a public hearing?
And that would include anybody who is in the law. Order of appeal or protest?
Okay.
Sure. About that plaintiff's attorney was talking about where hotels should only be revoked one year. Is there a state law that would be breaking if we follow the law? Kind of sounded like that to me.
Mayor Council, I would like to have my co-counsel, his name is Alex Brand respond. He has dealt with many hotel issues and is personally the law on these type of issues.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Council. The appellate's attorney was referring to the red light abatement act, which is a specific law to, for nuisance abatement actions. It provides a specific set of procedures if you're proceeding under that law. The council staff's recommendation is not proceeding under that law. And there's no, state law does not provide limits on, an express limit on, on how long a revocation can place. People can make arguments about that. There's, there's no current law that's saying if you're violating, they follow staff.
Okay, good. What else? I'm gonna go ahead and go to the overcarrying, who will deliberate, whoever we want. Go to Joe's Cafe.
Every vote must count.
Can we have the real counsel or can I have?
No, I mean, this is the opportunity now for council to deliberate amongst each other. If you have any questions, you can use the council. I'm happy to answer the question otherwise. An opportunity for you to assess among yourselves, to make comments, and then if there's a create. Anything to express?
Would you that, would we have to do it here?
No, it's, it's appropriate for you to act in a.
Okay, let's ponder. Okay. First of all, before we do render our decision, I do want to thank the board and against this item through the presentations tonight. I think people groups did a very thorough job in presenting the facts for us to make a decision. I appreciate that very much. That being said, if my colleagues are ready, go ahead and call for the votes as is going to be defined by our city clerk. And we'll render a decision on whether or not to uphold the decision of our planning commission or to overturn. Does take a majority vote, which is three of us, so whatever happens has to get at least two. It will be a tie. And also, I think it's fine, I think there's no more appeal on the city level.
And.
Okay, so you want to read what we're voting on, please, and how we vote?
Mr. Mayor, this evening, the recommended action provided by city staff is that this week, council find this not subject to SEPA and adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero-two denying the appeal of the planning commission resolution number two-five-six-two and rescinding and provoking resolution number eight-five-nine, which approved precise and development P four five.
Okay, so if we uphold, if you have a yes vote in your world, if the person says yes, they'll be.
Holding the planning commission is.
If it's a no, that means that we're going to turn down or go against the planning mission. This is correct?
Yes, that's correct. It would be appropriate for there to be a motion to adopt it. And then if you, if the motion passes and the resolution is adopted, the effect of it would be to revoke the.
Yeah, just to make that clear so we all know what we're voting on.
Right.
Okay. I need to have a motion on the group, on the supporting the decision of our planning commission on this item.
I'm a motion second.
Okay, so we have a first and second, and so please call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by council member Taylor, a second by council member Torres. I will now proceed, we'll call vote. Council member Torres?
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Shauer?
Yes.
We agree your vote, item does pass as recommended by staff. At this time, I will now ask that our recused council member and mayor Ploton enter the council chambers and see on the Dallas one.
Nice. You're good.
This is a sub. We can't go back.
Yeah, geezer.
We have now introduced business, which we have done, we have new business with the Suckers College Foundation and of their co-words. Recommended action, as you can see, to proceed with the purchase of a benefactor sponsorship, which includes registration of ten, a half-quarter page, door to come. Acknowledgement in the program or option two, which is three hundred dollars, which is three thousand dollars. I would recommend what we have done every year, and that is to go ahead and be a benefactor so that we're listed as a benefactor. I figured that if you take that by around seven hundred students, I think the number came up to five dollars a kid per person. So we're giving five dollars a student and we know that students are getting a lot more than that. So I think it's a good investment on my end. It also gives us a fact that we care about the college, care about our students, and that I think it also gives us a chance to show the support in the program. So looking forward to that. So I'd like to make a motion that we buy a benefactor's table at the Americana's and that we give an opportunity for our city council to attend, to represent the city. And if we can, if there's any overload, sometimes there is, I don't think this is yet, I think, oh, that we'll be able to afford to our city manager on Friday. You sort of second?
I'll second it, and I'm sure it's not all will say Cypress, my son, what their, Cypress College is a great college, it's a good one to support. My second.
Thank you.
Since it's mine, go ahead, vote probably.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we are declaring that this action is not subject to SEPA. We're approving the city's participation in the sponsorship contribution. And we are proceeding with option number one, which is a motion by Mayor Shauer, a second by Mayor Ploton Warren, I will now proceed, we'll call vote. Council member Van? Council member Torres?
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Ploton Warren?
Yeah.
And Mayor Shauer?
Yes.
And passes by vote?
Thank you, we'll move on to the next item. This is a proposition to the state ballot initiative to taxpayers protection government accountability act. I'll turn this over to our city manager.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, our local mayor members of the council. At its meeting of January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the council received a presentation from regional public affairs manager Connor Medina of the Reagan California City regarding state ballot initiative twenty-one dash oh-oh-four-two-A-one. The attorney general summary of the initiative is as follows. For newer increased state taxes currently enacted by two-thirds vote of legislature, also requires statewide election and majority voter approval. Limits voter's ability to pass voter-proposed local special taxes by raising the vote requirement to two-thirds. Eliminates voter's ability to advise how to spend revenues from proposed general tax on same ballot as the proposed tax. Expands definition of taxes to include certain regulatory fees, broadening application of tax approval requirements, and requires legislature or local governing bodies that certain other fees. CalCities, along with a broad coalition of local governments, labor, and public safety leaders, infrastructure advocates, and businesses, strongly oppose this initiative as it would limit voters' authority to adopt new rules for raising taxes and fees and make it more difficult to hold violators of state and local laws accountable. If passed, this initiative has the potential to jeopardize vital local and state services by risking billions of dollars currently dedicated to critical state and local services and potentially forcing cuts to public schools, fire and emergency response, law enforcement, public health, arts, libraries, affordable housing, services to support homeless residents, mental health services, and more. It also has the potential to reduce funding for critical infrastructure like streets, roads, public transportation, drinking water, new schools, sanitation, and utilities. As a result, CalCities is requesting the city council adopt a resolution opposing the taxpayer protection and government accountability act to demonstrate how harmful this measure would be to the community and the state of California. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
As you know, the OCAG and the Association of Montana Government and also the leading California cities are all opposing this. What it basically is, is again, the state is trying to take away any local funding that we have to run for our services. It's really interesting how they worry, considering the time when you get something by voters, they mention taxes and how it's going to save money. What they don't know is that those taxes are going to affect the state. So the taxes we pay, if they go into us, so we can do something, hopefully, it's going to go in Sacramento, that will never see it. So this is going to be our last stand here because this could bankrupt, could bankrupt some city taxes. So we need to stand in unison with a couple of the lead cities, OCAG, the rest of these local governments to protect our interests. I'm gonna make a motion that we do, do go up a resolution and get it off to them that we fully support fighting this and opposing it locally. I personally would put together a campaign to let our community know what's happening. You have any votes?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, I'll give you your vote. Thank you. All right, moving on. Public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the city council at this time? Is there any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, we need to see them.
Okay, good. We're in communications. Okay, do we have any mayor, chairman, council, agency initiating a business?
I'm hoping, just get a couple to put them out.
Okay, we'll go to fifteen A announcement.
I've attended a couple of the home meetings. They're set up in Fullerton, and they're kind of three cities now. What they're doing is homeless outreach. The idea is for them to do homeless outreach to all the nation, county, and city. That used to be the word spot. Interesting. No games here?
Okay, it's all one.
I've done that. They are ramping up on people. They, Brian Johnson, who are only council member and chairman, they're bored. They've got some pretty good ideas, they're spending a lot of money on a software program and giving a lot of information. They think that would be the difference between what they're doing and basically what they're doing. Then they're improving it. It looks like it's something worthwhile and it's something for the cities that have never had outreach. Well, most of the cities have, or one of the few that actually has had outreach. So, I'm interested in, are there any more on the third day? Oh, they are on boarding in the city stamp? We have a.
Okay. The only announcement I made is that Saturday it was raining very hard. We had my hair, we got rid of all the food. And the only thing left of the palace, which I didn't get on the porch, it was a good turnout. The scouts all wore raincoats, and I had twenty easy-ups. And it's too bad you didn't come because we gave away St. Louis, they were back with. So they were pretty happy, campers coming. Yeah, yeah, that's fine, too.
That's why we can't park. We have no place to park.
What I do is I'll bring your car. No, it'll be out tomorrow. We couldn't do it, it was raining yesterday. Okay, any other comments? Okay. Anything for a future meeting? Okay, study session. The other thing I was gonna ask was overlay. Did we have, wasn't there a meeting? Oh, it was on the planning commission. I still, what was, I think we might discuss that at some point, council vote?
She can be adopted.
The last planning commission, which was Wednesday last week, over January seventeenth, the town center specific plan was presented to the planning commission for recommendation to the city council. So the first step is the planning commission will review the specific plan, and then they'll take the vote on whether or not they leave a nation government approval, and the city council then get a presentation where we will present to you, and then we will decide whether or not we want to approve it or not on the second meeting. What the planning commission did at their meeting is they actually chose to continue the item. So it's going to be going back to the planning commission on February twenty-first. Some of the items of concern for them were in particular focused on the non-conforming status of some of the existing businesses and different properties that are there, whether or not they should be allowed to expand during periods. Those are the types of items that they direct staff to go back and take a look at. In that time, they also directed staff to work with some business owners that are currently located. Whether this was a big land area, we reached out to a couple. We have one meeting set up, and so we're reaching out to the rest of them to get all of their ideas incorporated before coming back in.
Thank you, yeah, I think it's basically, they chose to do that. Or they did go and charge the city. And when was the last time we charged the city a plan update? Is that part of the meeting?
Do you need a general plan update?
That's the general plan, yeah.
We would have to go back. With the turnover of staff, we haven't experienced a general plan update, so we have to go back and research the last time one was conducted.
And that might be a good idea because we have a decent time. And I think it's good that we didn't wait there. But it does start off the show. All right, we're moving on to fifteen D. That's you.
Okay. I can make this really simple. I brought this up because you have Chinese New Year coming up, the firecrackers involved with that, and I was asking you about fireworks. And so I think maybe the simplest thing to do since fireworks are such a hot topic is let's just, maybe it's a study center, maybe it's a council item, but in April, have our people take a look at how Chinese New Year is. have our people take a look at how Chinese New Year is planned with the firecrackers and all that. But let's just really dig down into fireworks in April. We always do it a little bit late. So, April, we're ahead of the fall, you know, and we get formulate plans as to what to do and really discuss it, go from there. So, I think we should put this whole topic on.
I'm.
May I pose?
Okay, it's roll B. Um, I am good for that, um, because, uh, I found out that that plane is made up entirely of upstate state. And so, I'm sure that they're going to be reporting very frequently, Chris, on, uh, updates on traffic. Because it's become a real issue at our town. Just try getting onto any of our materials in the morning, go work and go on top. Especially cereals. Thank you, Caesar, for that. That is really a rescue. It's, I'm coming out, there's a D four coming down the street, and I didn't know you go right or left, that would be exciting. Oh, yeah, you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. I'm in fifteen F. Uh, this is a discussion regarding, um, um, having, uh, parking enforcement with a, uh, hiring, uh, people or an agency that has experience in this to do this. Again, one of the reasons I wanted to give a look at that is this is so low of priority. Uh, in fact, it's I'm a priority for our sheriff's department, because I did not have time to let parking. Also, our code enforcement is busy with, um, so many other things, like taking care of building permits, abaintments, you know, rehab, inspections. I mean, they don't have time to park tickets. However, parking tickets, if you want to take a look at them, and I've heard this so much from the community, there's always seems to be some kind of bad activity or negative activity, crime, uh, that's associated with people that park illegally. As an example, on Main Street, at night, even though we have it posted, that's where the prostitutes gather, okay? And we really don't have the ability to, on a steady basis, maintain parking control there. You know, we did also red curb a lot of our streets along Beach Boulevard, so that we can control activity there. Yeah, we have no underlying tickets. Um, neighborhoods complain, uh, people get their block, but their driveways blocked. And it seems that a lot of their crime is because cars were parked suspiciously, or we have them for sale over on Catherine. Um, by the home, uh, by the home area also, where we have the, uh, townhomes. People park along the streets, and we bring streets with the cat sweep. Uh, we get parking tickets with the streetship that goes by, but sometimes it's so busy that it would be good to get ahead of time. You know, we have some crime on, I'm probably gonna pick on, but Monroe Street is an industrial street, and we have people who live in the market. There's a drug dealer, and it's, uh, gold card, and sell drugs on cereals and western. So, I mean, like, you know, there's no, we're doing that, it's just, I know that any agency that we hire, we have to be wanted, experienced, uh, San Ants, San Clemente, Anaheim, many cities have done this. Um, the revenue that we would gather on them, and although it's not a great amount, at the way we cover the cost of private security, so they're not paying our parking for it. And I think the fact that it's probably cheaper for that person to get a ticket than for what we pay our employees, uh, because we have benefits, we have payroll, things like that, that are all the reasons. Where that is responsibility of the person that we contract. I also think that if they were working in unison with the business owners, like having a meeting with, I have worked, if we have to use law advice, we can call a special meeting out of the city. To where we can find out if they're interested in joining together to have a private security to take care of different persons. Plan, maybe we get a symbiosis. Again, I think that would help with transparency, those supplements like that, where they have property owners posted, it's property owners' responsibility to call and get some help. This will relieve a burden on low priorities for our sheriff's department, so they could, uh, do a better impact on some of the other things that. If we were to go a step further, we can talk about issuing citations, uh, with people that might work for these companies that are sworn. Uh, but that would be another step. I'd like to just start something simple, just parking tickets. See if it works, and for our happy women, the community's happy women. There are getting alerts almost every day, or emails, and I'm sure you do too, of people complaining about parking. And you know what? It's not getting any better. So, if we can help with that, I'd like to explore that. Um, that being said, I'm gonna turn it back over to our city attorney, who I hope I have some information about the legality of it, if possible, or if we have to discuss it in the future.
Uh, Mayor Council, I'm aware that there are a number of cities that currently outsource certain citations to, uh, private, to issues. Um, and so, based on that, the, the, the practice that, um, is defensible and that states are in need, so, uh, at this point, that's the direction we want.
So if, if the council wants to give that direction, we can bring you back any more detailed report.
Okay, I would really appreciate support on that, because I think we should at least take a look at it. I think our, I think a lot of our customers in the public city. I know a lot of the sheriff's department. Um, you know, I, I get this one, this is sort of on Main Street, who's had his brand new truck, where they're smashed by a lady. Prostitutes, um, he's had his face broken into, um, some of the cars have been stolen, and, and this is really bad, but all of the young ladies of IP or the business, the cars are parked along Main Street. Um, and there has been some concern. I think if we issued tickets, I think there was certain strong message that that's not there, and we don't have that type of. So, I would like to continue the opportunity to at least take a look at it. I wanna find out if there's any costs to the city, or if we would be okay with that. And also, remember, in the end of the will, I'd like to maybe have this separate home call to our neighboring cities to see if there's any success, why, how they work it. And then I think we should go out, if everybody wants to do it, uh, and if it's recommended enough. Okay, we'll all come, we'll then find the appropriate agency. Second.
Question about something.
It's great.
Obviously, we want to find something that's, um, cost neutral to the city, but if it ends up being more costly, then, I know we're doing a user fee study, is it possible to change our fees for the citations to cover any additional costs that might occur to a different provider?
We don't want, we wouldn't want to hold up our current user fee study, but yes, the council can always amend the user fee study. You can even do that multiple times a year. So, if the council decides to consider this option, then we can act a fiscal analysis, and, um, we can have that discussion at that time.
And, and for me, it's, it's more a matter of, um, the safety of our staff. Because I know that, you know, at nighttime, it's probably not the best time to be out alone on the streets and running. Being that our, our code enforcement person may not be trained or even feared about to face whatever dangers might exist at night. So for me, it's a matter of making sure we protect our staff numbers more than anything else. And I agree with you that we need more coverage. Um, I don't think we have people working at all hours, and there are definitely certain hours where code enforcement is recommended, that we just don't have capacity for that now. So I, I, I appreciate that you're writing this up, I can be stepping into this. However, my priority is to make sure, um, whatever path we take, that our staff are protected and are not at risk in any way, and that we maintain more restability in con, in city conditions.
I appreciate that thought of cost neutral, because I think cost neutral would be a start. And there's another factor besides cost. Think of the money that we save in, in law enforcement and other staff hiring, if we're not paying them to do that when they're doing the regular job they should be doing, or can't be doing, to make our city safer. And to me, um, it eliminates prostitution, that's gonna help our sheriff's department. If it eliminates, uh, crime, burglaries, people breaking in and stuff, that's gonna save us a little bit of money. So there's, uh, also some level of saving that will benefit from this, I hope, that we can identify from having this service of the legislative. So cost neutral, to get started, I think we're gonna find that even if it wasn't quite cost neutral, the amount of money that's gonna save the city is gonna outweigh what are we doing.
So I put a motion and a second, shall we do the call vote?
I'm excited, just for the recent mail, so if I took a reach, I'd need that, um, some man.
Yep.
And Mayor Shaffer. I'm listening, so I'm excited.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're now down to fifteen G. This is the city council item, discussion regarding supporting all of the options to lieutenant specific development. Um, I would like to just make a simple comment on it. I think, I think it's that happy time after eighteen years, two days, that we have our city staff continue to explore what options are available. And maybe at some point, uh, it's an opportunity for us legally to discuss it publicly that we can. But I also would like for maybe, uh, to take a look at besides just options, to make sure that we are continuing with our relocation plan, which I think is something that would be very helpful in quality of life for the people that live there. So, if I can just get some support on that direction, to where we continue on with our relocation plan. And, uh, again, looking at all options, at some point, uh, provide those back, whether we can do it in a public day or in closed session. I think it still needs to be addressed. So I'm making a motion, that we do that. I have a second.
Question. So, um, I know that we have a DNA right now, and so, our DNA requires us to negotiate with Pepper, then faith, and we're not exploring other options, because we're all down by DNA. On the DNA expires, then we can explore other options, is that correct?
Right, but the options, the options that we're taking a look at help us in our negotiations. In other words, if we have some kind of an idea or some kind of a solution, then of course we would bring it to, we have the DNA, yes. That's what we have to do, my love, you know? Right? I think that's, it's not. No, I understand that. That's why I'm saying that that's probably the appropriate place for it. I just publicly want, I just want publicly, publicly at this time, as I did last meeting, to let the public know that we are being, we've been working for eighteen years, and spent a great deal of our money. And it's time that this come to fruition, one way or the other. As you know, one of the things that I was taking a look at was, I hope we're not forced to just abandon this project, because that would be unfair to a lot of different parties. Uh, there is a level of frustration, and the reason I put this back on there is because I'm frustrated. And I'm not happy, and I think that the people that, I mean, I keep saying this, it's not us. It's not the law firms or lawyers that negotiate, it's the people that live there, uh, in this, uh, conditions. And you know what? I know those conditions. I've been there, I've been a long time, talking to people. Most of us have been there, we've been to the city hall, I mean, the town hall meetings, and we know what it's like there. It's time that we just, the longer I'm doing this, I'm trying to emphasize how important it is that the, the people that are involved with this listen to what I'm saying. And maybe if it's done, maybe come up with a solution, and we need to find out how we can help them. Yes, sir. I do agree with, uh, I suppose, in my direction. Sound that we have a direction. Okay, well, I got my message out tonight, so I'm not happy yet, but that's all. It's just time that, you know, we've been dealing a lot in closed session, which we can't discuss publicly. But I'd just say, my personal opinion, of which I hope maybe some of you, uh, can understand, that enough's not enough. And that whoever's, whatever's impeding us, just like whatever's impeding us, know that that impetus has gotta stop. It's time for us to get together, work together, and move forward. I hope everyone can do that, so I appreciate that. Okay, um, Steve, attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Council, I have no comments.
I know we're the county and city manager, executive director, so I'll call you.
I think, thank you, that's been a good evening.
Okay, if there's nothing else, these three hours ago, I assure.
We have council headquarters, six, six, nine, we're all involved there. The question that council says about, you know, we're gonna watch.
I say about John.